Welcome back, everybody, to the committee of the whole for the District of High School. It's April 13th. As acting mayor for the month of April, I am councillor Jenna Stoner and I'll be chairing the meeting. We have ministerial order M192 that we need to pass. And this is pertinent to ministerial order M192 that this was squamish is excluding in-person public attendance. At this April 13th meeting on the basis of full public attendance in a manner consistent with the public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. But the district is ensuring openness, transparency and accessibility and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being live streamed and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. May I ask somebody move that motion, please? Go by councillor Peddingill, second by. Thank you. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Also, just quickly go over our electronic meeting policy procedures. So council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. When the council member disconnects or reconnects or enters or exits the meeting, so that this can be recorded in the minute. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they wish to be placed on the speakers list. You can either do that by raising your hand if you're on video or if you're on audio only, just unmute yourself and say chair. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required for a vote in favor. Council members and participants and staff. I'll put their telephone and computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. If you're having any troubles or difficulties, please text the corporate officer today, Robin Arthur's. And if the issue is on our side, we can recess the meeting for up to 10 minutes to address any of those technical difficulties. With that, councillor, I just want to advise you that we are going to suspend the order of the agenda. Because we do have a delegation at 1pm, so we'll go straight to item 6.1. And we'll move item 5.1 as our first item under staff reports. So with that, I will pass the presentation over to Ms Peters, who's here from the Be Amazing campaign. Welcome, Ms Peters.
Thank you very much. My name is Cathy Peters and I'm a former inner-city high school teacher who's been raising awareness to the issue of human sex trafficking, sexual exploitation and child sex trafficking. The politicians, police and public in British Columbia for the past seven years. Since the federal law, the Protection of Communities and Exploited Persons Act was passed in 2014. So that the police would enforce it, so the public would understand it and be able to report it. So the law has three parts. Number one, it targets the demand by targeting the buyer of sex. The predator, trafficker, pimp, facilitator, john, buyer of sex are criminalized. Number two, recognizes the seller of sex as a victim, usually female, and is not criminalized. Number three, exit strategies are put in place to assist the victim out of the sex trade. The law focuses on a source of harm, the buyers of sex and profiteers. The clear statement from Parliament was that girls and women in Canada are not for sale. That they are full human beings with dignity and human rights. BC is not enforcing this law or raising the public awareness. And is far behind all provinces in Canada and is therefore the best place in Canada to buy and sell women and children for sex. Vancouver is a port city and entry point into Canada. And along with Toronto is a global sex tourism destination. Canada is known as a child sex tourism destination and the public don't know this. Contributing factors are globalization, unregulated technology, limited law enforcement and very little prevention education. The sex industry is growing fast. It is targeting our children. Children is where the money is fueled by the internet, where most of the luring is taking place and COVID is making things much worse. That 13 years old is the average age for recruitment into the sex industry. It's aged 10 and 12 years of age in Vancouver and Surrey, much younger for indigenous girls. 54% are indigenous. They are severely overrepresented in the sex industry. This is the most egregious form of systemic racism in the country. 82% involved in prostitution, experience, childhood, sexual abuse or incest. 72% live with complex PTSD, which is the worst form of trauma a human can experience. 95% in prostitution want to leave. It is not a choice or job. 86% have housing needs. Homelessness makes them vulnerable. 82% need drug rehabilitation because drugs and the sex industry go together. So what can Squamish do? Train your business licensing managers what to look for when granting business licenses. Unregistered massage and body rub parlors, nail spas, holistic health centers, day spas, modeling agencies, tattoo parlors, escort services, cheat bars and hotels, men's clubs, Airbnb, VRBO, casinos, strip clubs, organized crime clubhouses and truck stops can all be typical covers for sex trafficking and exploitation. Regarding hotels and motels, Ontario, their best practices, in an effort to curb trafficking is mandating registration of every guest who is actually physically in the room. I have three asks. Could I present to any community safety committee, police board or youth service provider? I have already presented to the RCMP local detachment on four occasions. Number two, could you alert the premier and solicitor general that this crime is a priority in BC? And ask for funding for provincial law enforcement and a provincial awareness campaign? And BC needs an inter-agency human sex trafficking task force that's similar to what is available for drugs and gangs. This is what they have in Ontario and Manitoba. They are best practices in the country. And lastly, could you write me a letter of support? Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms Peters. Just to clarify on the last ask, a letter of support for, to what end?
To the end that I could present to other city councils. So I could present to any community support group. So I could present to your police board. So I could present to MLAs or the premier. I could go all the way up to MPs. Just sort of, I would use it as a letter of introduction.
Thank you. Council, any questions? For Ms Peters? Yeah, Mayor Elliott.
Ms Peters, you say that we are a destination. And are there Canadian studies that show that?
Great places to, first of all, we don't keep data and stats in Canada, just to let you know. I get that information. I'm just reading a current book by Dr. Robert Christmas called The Sex Industry. On how the sex industry is targeting our youth. That is an excellent book. The Joyce Smith Foundation. Joyce Smith is the expert in the country. She's a former MP. I have actually volunteered for her, so you can go to her website. You can go to the national, well, the federal public safety website on human trafficking. You can go to the RCMP Human Trafficking Coordination Centre. We also have a national human trafficking hotline number. They have a website. Those are all good places to go to look at what's going on. But again, it's very minimal. The stats I gave you, those sources would identify those things, but we don't have a stat like the states does. The states is literally decades ahead of us. And they have stats for every state in the United States. We don't even have that up here.
And just to clarify, you said that Ontario and Manitoba have the best practices in the country?
Yes, globally, actually. And that's cited by the Trafficking in Persons Report put up by the US State Department every year. They've been putting out a report card in every country in the world that evaluates how they're doing on human trafficking. They've been doing this report for the last 20 years. So in 2020, I just always look up what it says about Canada. It's quite a scathing report, but previous years, Ontario has been cited as best practices. They're very good at enforcing the federal law that we have and also public awareness. They have human trafficking coordinators in Ontario and in Manitoba. Joyce Smith, the MP that introduced our three human trafficking laws that we have in Canada is from Manitoba. You go to Manitoba, everybody's heard of Joyce Smith, number one. Everybody knows the issue of human trafficking in Manitoba. You talk to anybody here in BC, and this is why I'm presenting to as many city councils as I can. The public here have not even heard of human trafficking. They don't even know what I'm talking about. I mean, I just did a presentation last night to the Vancouver School Board. Because they were considering removing their school liaison officers. And I warned them not to do that because they didn't know about the issue of human sex trafficking. And it is children. I want to be really clear about that. It's very young children they're targeting. And with COVID, young people are at home, unsupervised, too much screen time. And the luring is really taking off right there. As a matter of fact, Brenda Lookie, she's the RCMP Federal Commissioner. She just reported yesterday to the Federal Ethics Committee and said last year between March and May, the child sexual exploitation numbers went up 36%. That is shocking. So I mean, we've got a real problem on our hands and there is no public awareness in British Columbia. Even the media typically, now rural newspapers are starting to pick up on my presentation. But CBC, Global News, CTV, CKNW, they won't cover this. They are very one-sided. They're very pro-sex industry. And what I'm thrilled about presenting to Squamish, please understand, you're close to Vancouver. And Vancouver is a global sex tourism destination. Think of the cruise ships, cruise ships coming here, the tourists coming here, going on their way up to Whistler. Squamish, of course, is just a fabulous destination. What are you, the outdoor capital of Canada?
Councillor Peddingill?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just wondering if you can clarify a little bit what you mean by trafficking? And just in terms of, you know, Matt Gaetz in the States is in the news a lot. And that's often in the context of moving people across international or state boundaries. And that's bundled in with this term trafficking. It sort of sounds like with what you're talking about, though, the victimization is happening in people's own communities as opposed to moving the children or women to other communities. And can you just clarify, is this sort of happening at and around home? Or is this about, you know, people being moved to other cities once they've been lured and so on?
Okay, excellent, excellent question. 93% of this is domestic. So it is local. It's happening in local communities. Now, do they get moved around? Yeah, there are circuits. So for example, if girls were recruited, and I hate to say it, it is the indigenous that are overrepresented. If they're recruited out of Mount Currie or the Squamish Nation, they'll be moved up to Whistler. They'll be moved to Vancouver. They'll be moved to Edmonton, then Calgary, and then back down. So they are sort of local circuits that they do. If it's out east, it will be Montreal, Toronto, Ottawa and Halifax. So there are loops. And then it's not necessarily cross-border. I mean, it can be for sure, but we got borders closed right now. So it is domestic.
Thank you. Council, any further questions from Ms Peters at this time? No doubt that this is a pressing issue with lots of different facets to it. Ms Peters did come forward with a few requests. I don't, I feel like there's still some information that I would need to digest in order to move any of those motions personally. So I wonder if Ms Peters, you could follow up with some additional background information for council's consideration? And any training materials in particular that we could pass along to our business licensing inspectors to keep them on their toes on what they should be looking for?
I can certainly do that. I should say my website is quite new and there's a lot of information on there, including teaching workshops on what this looks like.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much for that high-level overview. And we look forward to getting some further materials. And thank you for your time today and presenting to council.
Thanks very much.
All right, council, we're going to go backwards on our agenda here and go back to the alternative tax scheme. I believe we have Ms Boxer and Ms Clausen on the line. Not sure who it is that I'm passing it over to.
Good afternoon.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, it's Linda Clausen. I'm just going to share my screen. And can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. It's not, it's not quite in presenter mode yet, but we can see your screen.
Okay, how about now?
Yeah, that we can still see the section that has your notes. So it's not full screen or the slide.
How about now?
Perfect, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So my name is Linda Clausen, the manager of financial operations. And today, we want to talk about the alternative tax collection scheme bylaw. Last year in 2020, council implemented an alternative tax collection scheme in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This bylaw delayed the penalty dates. In this presentation, we want to provide to council relevant information to provide staff with direction for 2021 tax and utility collection year. In this presentation, we will look at what remained consistent. What were the impacts of the alternative tax scheme and options we considered for 2021? So what stayed the same for 2020? In this, in late December, we adopted our utility fees charges. In early May, we adopted the tax rate bylaw. We issued, we were able to issue our taxes and utility notices. And we kept the due date the same as of, for July the 2nd. And this is to ensure that we were able to receive mortgage company payments. As well as encourage other people that could make the payment to make the payments. And to make the deferment program applications on time. The homeowner grant still applied and of course, interest was still applied as well. So what changed in 2020 versus prior years pre-COVID? So first of all, in pre-COVID years, we applied our penalty after July 2nd and the first business day after July 31st. So it's usually on August 1st. We applied it at 5% to 5%. In COVID years, we provided, or sorry, in 2020, we provided penalties at, after September 30th and after November 30th. So what happened there is we had a delay in taxes collected. By July 2nd, in both years, we normally collect about 87%. However, in 2020, we collected about 75% of the dollars for property taxes and utilities. The tax sale in 2020 was deferred to by one year. As a result of that, there was, we actually, as a result of that, we had delinquent taxes in 2020, which is the first time in a few years that we've seen that. The collection penalty or the collection period was longer. And as a result of that, also the penalty revenue decreased. Last year, we had several provincial COVID measures implemented. And one of those was we didn't have to adhere to, or the deadlines were pushed out a little bit further. Specifically, the school tax. The school tax deadline was pushed out to early 2021. And our collection of property taxes and utilities was relaxed in 2020. That was good for our, our community as well as for the front desk. They had, they said that they have never seen such a nice property tax season. One thing to note is the collections as at December 31st was only 1% less than our previous history. So our, the community charter allows municipalities to establish an alternative tax collection scheme. This allows us to use this alternative tax collection scheme to set one or more due dates, penalties and interest rates. We elected to only change the penalty dates and we did this. We did, we did this to ensure that we would get collections throughout the year as much as possible. Also, although it's not new, the property tax deferment program is still there for, for principal residences. It provides a low-interest loan where the province pays the property taxes to the local government. And we have two programs there. This is for resident, residential. It's for regular program is for those individuals that are 55 or older. And it's also for families with children program. It was really encouraging to see that most of our accounts were paid by July 2nd. 60% of the residential individuals or homeowners paid by July 2nd. And 70% of the residential accounts were paid. Now, these are accounts, not dollar values. Residential, just residential classes include principal residences, corporate and investment owners, as well as second homeowners. And commercial classes include a variety of owners from large retail, large format retail to small owner operators. Many of the large and small businesses made the decision to delay their payments. However, the top 25 corporate accounts represented about 60% of the commercial outstanding accounts as of July 2nd. Now, it's, it's just a note that, or a note to remember is that the owners of the properties are the benefactors of any delay in penalty that we provide to them. It's difficult for us to understand if they actually passed along that benefit to their leases if they're a small business owner. Just a few notes, we talked to with our economic development officer to get a sense how the small businesses are dealing with the COVID constraints out there. I think a general, I think everybody is suffering to some degree. However, the small business, retail and food sectors are facing significant challenges due to the COVID constraints. It's difficult for them to work to their capacity. Other challenges include supply chain challenges, getting the products that they need, as well as HR issues. If, if an employee would happen to get sick, sometimes that business has to either curtail or close the, close the business for a bit until they get better. And also, large format retail have been more resilient to the COVID constraints. They seem to have better supply chain processes as well as able to adjust their business accordingly. So what is changing for 2021 as compared to 2020? First of all, and this is quite a large item, is that there is no delay for municipalities of the school tax payment. What that means for us is that the district will need to pay 75% of the school tax requisition within five business days after July. And for us, it really, we haven't seen the school tax requisition yet. However, if it was before COVID, it was about $12 million. So it would be 75%, so we would have to pay about $9 million five business days after July 2nd. And another big change, although it may not be related to business or property taxes, the province, well, it is related property taxes. It's not related to the alternative tax scheme, is the province will be administering the homeowner grant 100%. So people will need to go directly to the province to get their grant this year. So staff has reviewed what other municipalities are considering on the form of the GFOA website or Government Finance Officers Association website. And what we found there that of those that did have a look and did reply, it was Langley, Comox, Lilwet, Campbell River and Prince Rupert. They are not extending their, their penalties. And however, we found that the village of Stewart is, as well as, recently, we came to understand that Whistlers are well extending their alternative tax scheme, I think to September 30th. So staff has considered four options. And over the next four slides, we will walk through the highlights of each of these options. These options are basically, option A is a general tax scheme. And options B, C and D are alternative tax schemes with different variations. In each of the four schemes, we encouraged to keep the same July 2nd due date. And however, we have changed some of the penalty amounts and the penalty dates. In this option, option A is the general tax scheme. This is where we were, this is our historical general tax scheme and requires an amendment to our utility bylaws. And it's zero interest opportunity cost. Interest opportunity cost is basically the difference of our interest earnings. We would have had, had we, difference between, between what we normally would have collected versus what we think we would have collected and our, and our interest rates. Our interest rates, however, are impacted by, it's very low these days, so it's a minimal cost. In option B, this is exactly the same as the alternative tax scheme that we had last year or in 2020. And we will not, we will need to set up a new alternative tax bylaw if we choose this option. Option C and D. In these options that we looked at, we looked at, in option C, we look at applying the penalty after August 31st, looked at applying a 10% penalty. And it's for both residential and commercial. We calculated an interest opportunity cost of about $6,000. If we choose this option, we would require an alternative tax scheme bylaw as well as amendment of the utility bylaws. Option D, this is an option where we look at a different penalty scheme for residential and commercial. When staff brought this to council last year, this, this scheme, although it was available to us to do, our software would not allow it. Recent information that came to us, now we can do it. So however, it's in a simplified format. In that, what that means is they have two categories, either commercial or residential. If, if there is a role that has both commercial and residential, that would be a store, storefront as well as apartments, they would probably, software allows us to attach the commercial deadlines to that. The solution is a complicated, a little bit more complicated solution to implement. And the communication and has some administrative challenges we would need to work through. And it also requires a new alternative tax scheme bylaw as well as amended utility bylaws. So after considering the options, staff is recommending to go back to the general tax collection scheme. So after considering the options, staff is recommending to go back to the general tax collection scheme. This is the uh best financial outcome for the district and moves the district into a normal collection scheme. If uh with the scheme, the, we would need to amend the utility back, uh bylaws, update notices and systems, work on a communication plan. I think our key messages here would be, please pay uh your property taxes and utilities by the due date. If you can't pay, please consider the deferment program if you're eligible. And uh, and also do what you can to not go into arrears or delinquent. Also, moving forward, um, our next steps would also move forward with the property tax and utility billing process and ordering all our administrative supplies that we need to order from the printers. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Claussen. Uh, over to council, questions? Council Penningill?
Yeah, just want to understand option B a little bit because you mentioned um five days after July second, about nine million dollars for school taxes due. So I'm assuming if people decided to uh hold off on their payments till October, for example, or on a similar pattern we saw last year, um, are, are you suggesting that's where we incur a twelve thousand dollar interest cost and that's our cost? Uh, so that's the one part of the question. The other part is, you know, how would that impact our cash flow? Because I'm assuming we would have to take a, a loan of some sort to cover any shortfall in that nine million dollars. And, and, and so have staff looked at that at all?
So, are, you're, you're considering option B?
Yeah, just wondering uh it, how, how the, that nine million dollars fits in terms of cash flow and interest uh in option B, or what would that mean?
So in option B, um, basically, interest is, is lost because we don't get to collect that interest. And, and for the nine million dollars for school taxes, we would have to pay that regardless. Last year, we could delay, uh, delay that uh to the end of the year.
Okay, so, so I understand.
So it's a, I'm, I'm, we will, will probably, I don't know, it depends how the collection rates actually flow. Last year, we, we collected seventy-six percent of all our uh property tax and utilities, and we would have had enough money to um cover that school tax. This year, I don't, you don't know what the behavior will be of the, of the property owners.
Okay, so, so we could end up with interest charges of our own. That's, that's not what that twelve thousand dollars is speaking to, that's lost opportunity.
Yeah, it's lost opportunity, yeah.
And, and there's a potential of cash flow issues, depending on that.
Think we have cash flow issues at this moment. We're able to cover it with other cash we have in the, in the bank.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Elliott, go ahead.
Ms. Claussen, there's no way, is there, to um make a scheme that would delay this for a commercial business? There's no way we can tell whether they're passing this on to tenants?
That's, that's what I was trying to convey. It's really difficult for us to tell because the class, the property classes are either commercial or class one or class six. We don't, it's the owners that get the direct benefit. There's no linear line to the small business, for example. It's the owners that get the benefit of the delay, and we don't know.
And, and scheme, or option C is delaying till the end of August, which allows folks to potentially reap the rewards of the summer, potentially. And why have staff chosen to put the, the whole ten percent on, on that due date?
Um, it was just a different option. As you can see, there's, you probably could structure this many different ways. So it was just a different structure than option, option B.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question, and then I'll go to other councillors if there's other questions.
Um, yes, Chair.
Yeah, all right, I'll put you on the list, Council French.
Thank you.
Uh, I was just curious about, um, I guess maybe where Council Penningill was going a little bit. Uh, Ms. Claussen, if you could clarify what the potential cash flow constraints or cost to the district would be in either option B or C? If we did fall short, say by three million dollars for the school tax remittance to the province, would we have to borrow, would we just basically have to borrow that money to cover it? Or would we just be using cash that's in reserve somewhere else until that tax money was remitted by our community?
We, we, we have no cash flow constraints at this time. Our, our cash is available for us to use, um, and we wouldn't have to borrow any money. So it, it simply is the interest, interest cost, interest opportunity loss.
Good, thank you. Uh, Council French, over to you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm curious about giving relief to food and beverage operators specifically, which I think means relief to commercial spaces broadly. With no guarantees landlords will pass on the relief to their tenants. This is what I heard in, in the uh presentation. So in option D, does staff have an idea of what the lost interest opportunity would be if we opt to revert uh the residential collection back to the pre-COVID scenario and allow payment delays for owners of commercial spaces? That wasn't specifically noted in the slides about um option D.
It, it wasn't noted in the slide for option D because there's several things that are, are required there. The dates, I didn't, I didn't pick a date. However, I need to configure our current software system, so that'll cost us some money um to some degree. It's available, but I need to configure it. And I'm just, uh, there's, I don't have the estimate quite yet. As, as well as it depends which date we put on that. So if it's uh three million dollars, we could estimate it um to be about uh four thousand dollars a month. But it's difficult to estimate that without more parameters or guidelines around it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council Ray, so for you.
Thank you, Ms. Claussen. Uh, this interest opportunity cost, so that is interest we would ordinarily collect on overdue payments in a normal year?
But that is the difference between in a normal year, what I would collect and what I think I'm going to collect in a year where I provide uh a delay in penalties. So it's basically the eighty-seven percent versus the seventy-six percent of all, all uh collections.
Right. Do we budget for that revenue?
Yes. Yeah, we budget for the rest, for the year, right?
Yeah.
We don't necessarily budget month to month.
No, but we budget, uh, we, we anticipate that revenue?
That interest revenue, I, I don't know if we go to that granular level at this time.
So if it shows up, but just go into accumulated surplus or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fox, I saw your hand. Did you have something to add to that?
No, that's fine. I was just going to um provide a clarification that, yes, we do budget to it, not to that granular level. And anything over and above would go into accumulated surplus, so just clarifying.
All right, council, we have a few options presented in front of us. We do need to make a decision. Um, is anybody willing to put forward a motion or have a specific direction they'd like to take? Council Penningill and Council Ray?
Yeah, I, I mean, I heard a, a bunch of different options, so I'll just try one and see where it goes. I'm going to move option B, and I would speak to Y if it gets a second or.
Council Ray, are you seconding? Go ahead, Council Penningill.
Yeah, so thank you. My, my thinking here is that it's essentially what we just did. I understand the provinces changed some things. But for me, in the context of everything, uh, the twelve thousand dollar opportunity cost is one that I, I think is, is a risk worth taking. Looking at some of the other options and the other additional bylaws and stuff that need to be amended, I'm sort of hoping and assuming uh with option B, it is um uh less work on, on that front. And um I would, you know, strongly encourage uh commercial owners to pass on the savings and would appreciate hearing from businesses if they're not seeing that. Um, you know, that's something I would, I would appreciate hearing from them. Uh, and they might also want to consider um sharing with the community when, when the, the owners do pass that on. I think that would be a good news story for, for them. So um, that's my thinking for putting that forward. Thank you.
Uh, I have Council Ray as a secondor, and then Mayor Elliott.
Thank you, a, and I'm supporting this because uh I just don't think we're out of this yet. I can appreciate the desire to get back to where we were before the pandemic struck and the advantages of that, but I just don't think we're quite there yet. I don't, I don't want to say I don't care about the interest, uh, but for me, that's not a determining point. It's relatively small, and, and so I just disregard that really. Uh, I'm more concerned about just the state of our business community. And, you know, it's probably not much better, if at all, uh, compared to this time last year. And so I think more or less the same provisions apply. And hopefully, next year in twenty-twenty-two, we'll be able to make a decision to, to get it back to more like it was before the pandemic. Uh, but I'm inclined to go with something like option B um to give a little bit more relief.
All right, I have uh Mayor Elliott, then Council Herford, then Council French.
I'm not going to support this motion. I think the dates are too far out. Even those communities that are applying an alternative tax scheme are not delaying payment this far out. I think without the concessions from the province, the people that took advantage of this, we can see it from our tax roll, are large developers, large multinationals who absolutely can afford to pay. What I'd like to see, um, I would have supported uh an option around C where the date is a little bit further out, gives some of our small businesses a chance to get through the summer season. But delaying payment to October one and December one doesn't make sense to me in this environment. And so I can't support this.
Thank you, Council Herford.
Um, thank you. Um, generally, I'm supportive of this, of this direction. It's, it's, I feel the impact was, was, was quite minimal. Um, although the um Mayor Elliott's comments uh do give me, do give me pause. So um, but I do, I do think that um, my first scan when I looked at this, I was interested in supporting our business community, particularly food and beverage, and understood what that meant and was thinking of breaking this into two pieces. But being a business owner and uh doesn't preclude you from being a, a landowner as well. So I, I think that um something that addresses both uh is, uh, is where I would like to, to go. Perhaps this option goes uh maybe going too far. So I'm going to listen to the rest of the comments from, from council before I, uh, before I make my final decision uh on this. But uh, this is the, the territory that I would like, like to be in, but this may be going too far.
Council French?
Thanks, Chair. Um, and uh, I, I do feel that this goes a little bit too far out. And I do want for us to find a way to um give some relief to particularly the food and beverage sector and um those that are operating in commercial spaces that have been particularly hit hard through the COVID period. So I won't be supporting this direction.
Thank you. Uh, Council Anderson?
Thank you. The information that uh the largest business other accounts represents sixty percent of the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight delayed payments leaked off the page for me. And uh, in, in echoing Mayor Elliott, I'm, I think that I'm looking more towards the option C as a happy medium. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I too was uh open to something around option C, but I think that option B goes too far for me. Um, I just don't think we have the certainty that this actually gets passed on to the, to benefit those who we actually are trying to benefit. And so um I will not support this motion. Um, but if there's, Council Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I mean, the specific date isn't the central piece of this option to me. And so if, if one of my colleagues wanted, was comfortable just proposing uh different dates, if, if the rest made sense still, it's something I would be open to.
Uh, I would like to vote on this motion, and then uh if somebody would like to put forward something different, then great. So I will not see any further comments, call the question, all those opposed? I have Council Herford, Council Anderson, Mayor Elliott.
Chair, I'm opposed.
Thank you, and Council French opposed, motion fails. Would you like to put forward an alternative motion? Mayor Elliott? You're on mute.
I would like to put forward option C, um, but apply a five percent penalty at August thirty-first and the remaining five percent at September thirtieth.
Seconded by Council Herford. Any further comments on this motion? Uh, Mayor Elliott?
Our staff spoke to some of the communication that we'll need to do around any alternative tax scheme. And I think it's important that we reach very directly to the Chamber of Commerce and, and use their communication channels to their members as well as Tourism Squamish to make sure that those that are leasing space understand that we have delayed penalties with the idea that uh this could be eased for their benefit, those that are holding triple net leases. So I think part of our communication has to be education to the small business community. I think it is likely that the large people who haven't suffered as much will take advantage of this. Why wouldn't you? Um, to their own benefit. But I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to educate our small business community about the asks that they could be making to their landlords uh who might own their properties around um easing their tax payments into August and September.
Thank you. Any further comments? Council Penningill?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. I think, you know, the options were relatively similar, and, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with this option as well. And just um building a little bit off the mayor's comments, I, I wonder if it would make sense for the chamber and/or us at some point in the future to survey businesses and ask if they saw these savings passed on to them.
Thank you for that thought. Any further comment, Council Ray?
Yeah, thanks, and I'll also support this. I, I think the point I was trying to make the last time was, I don't think we're back to business as usual yet. And so some relief, I think, is, is called for. I take Council French's point, but you, you know, tax uh policy through tax uh is kind of a blunt instrument because you have these classes, and it's very hard to differentiate once you're inside a class with one business type versus another business type. So I think this is about the best we can do as far as granting relief goes. Unless we start getting specific about a particular class, but then you're including small, commercial and large commercial at the same time, and, and you cannot differentiate. So I'm happy with this uh level of relief. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Council Herford.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this, this motion. I think this um strikes a, a good balance and provides uh relief uh to the community as a whole because the, the ongoing effects of the, of the, the COVID-nineteen um health crisis uh has, has been um wide-reaching. And uh, and I think this, um, I think this is a, a responsible action to take this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any further comments. I will call the question. Any opposed? Nobody opposes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to staff for your work on this file.
Thank you.
All right, council. We are on item uh now seven-one, the fees and charges update, building and planning fees. Let's wait for our staff changeover.
Good afternoon councillor or committee of the whole. My name is Jonas Valaniscus and I will be presenting the staff report on fees and charges by law update and cannabis retail. I'll just share my screen.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Valaniscus. Welcome to the meeting.
Can council see the presentation slide?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Perfect. So thank you again. This is a follow-up to a previous community of the whole report. So community planning has identified a number of changes to development application fees that are due for review and necessary to ensure that the department remains primarily funded by development fees. So a number of changes have been also proposed to business licensing bylaw to remove regulatory duplication between provincial and municipal regulations. The intent of this presentation is to respond to councils and community feedback that we've gathered since the last meeting before returning to council for a reading consideration of the pilot changes. So just a little bit of background of what we did since that last meeting. So in November of last year, we had the introduction, presentation to council with proposed changes to cannabis retail regulations and the fees. Since then, so council at the end of that meeting provided a number of feedback points. And these are summarized here. One, there was desire to engage with cannabis retailers on proposed changes. There was a desire for additional work on how we could incentivize exceeding the step code, given the changes this year that brought a lot of the buildings to the top of the step as a requirement. So there wasn't much more in terms of where a development could go in relation to energy efficiency. And council wanted staff to look into that. Also, there was a request to compare fees with other jurisdictions and permitting times, a better analysis of revenue impact, a review of cannabis air filtration requirements, and add a technology lens to improve quality of applications. And then between November and March of this year, we did engage with cannabis retailers. So these changes were circulated to all existing retailers and those that were in the application process. The response was generally positive. Air filter, we also included the council meeting link so that retailers could watch the meeting and see what council deliberation was. And some of them did respond on air filtration, confirming that it's not an issue because everything now comes in sealed, in sealed packages and it has to leave the store in sealed packages. Staff agree with this notion. We asked the province this question and unfortunately just haven't been able to get in touch with the province, so we have not heard back. But the province, we know, is not regulating this aspect, whereas they are, the federal government, for instance, is regulating this when it comes to production. And I think what the issue before cannabis was regulated provincially, cannabis retail, was that there was no sealing of packaging at the retail shops. There might have been some action going on at the retail shops. So it's a very different environment that we're operating now. So although we haven't heard from the province on their take on this, I think that the recent cannabis retail establishments that have opened up don't, no longer carry those issues of having orders in the inside or outside the shop. There was a desire from the retailers to, or some of the retailers, to prohibit provincially-run retail. And it's just not something that municipal is within municipal jurisdiction, so it's not possible for us to address. There was also a desire to align fees with other retail types. So we are proposing some changes to the previous proposal, reducing the fees for the first year to, from $5,000 to $3,000 for a business license and then aligning them with all other retail fees, which would be $130 for the first 93 square meters of retail space and then $50 for any additional 93 square meters. The $3,000 fee is still necessary because we are required by the province to advertise the application, collect feedback and then pass that on to the province. So that does involve quite a bit of staff time and there's advertising expenses as well. The project, we've also started a project webpage with the fees update, with the ability to collect feedback for the page. We presented the fee changes to development liaison committee, which is a staff and industry committee that meets regularly to discuss any development trends or issues in the district. So we went over all the fee changes. Concern was identified with current fees for environmental DP applications for very large projects. There was one project that was, I think the application fee was in the tens of thousands of dollars. But the staff advised that fees are likely justified because with those large, a large project that has significant environmental considerations within it takes a lot of staff time. And so it's just not something that I think we should be reducing at this point in time, given also how many environmental review resources we have. We, so generally, the committee, the industry members on the committee were supportive of the changes as long as it sort of improves review times and resource capacity at the district. There was a virtual open house set up to discuss building permit and development fee changes a few weeks ago. Again, it wasn't, there was not any major opposition. It was overall supportive of the increases, provided that it improves our review times and our capacity. There was a concern identified about servicing review timelines and that is something that we are addressing as well. This is more related to review, engineering review of proposed services. So for larger projects, there's a servicing agreement often that goes along it. And it's also goes through a pretty complex review process. So there was a concern with the timelines on that. Concern that privately-built affordable housing was not being incentivized. So we are proposing to completely exempt publicly-built affordable housing and publicly-owned affordable housing. And after this consultation, we're also proposing to reduce the fees for privately-built affordable housing. So it would be going down from $9 to $7 per thousand construction value, in line with other incentives that we are proposing. There was, one of the things that we are proposing to initiate this year, we've already started the project, is a certified professional program for complex permits. And somebody identified that if we go there, that we need to recognize the fact that there is more work being done by the applicant and less work, review work being done by the district in the fees when we do that. There was a suggestion to consider a max permit fee and concern about rising construction costs impacting fees because we calculate building permit fees based on construction value. We will, that is something that we will have to monitor. We haven't seen this change yet, even though we know that construction values have been, or construction costs have been rising. The declared values have not been keeping up on these applications. So it hasn't been an issue to date, but it is something that we will have to monitor. So in terms of council feedback, engagement with cannabis retailers that was completed regarding additional work on exceeding step codes. So we are proposing some changes since last time. We are proposing to introduce low-carbon self-sufficient buildings for discounted building permit fee. And that essentially, those buildings will have to meet two requirements. One is cooking and heating, it has to come from renewables. So this is in line with the zoning changes we're making for density bonus. And then the second requirement, in this case, you have to meet both, would be either one step above the required step code for those buildings that are not there yet. And then for buildings that are at the top of the step code, there would have to be a 20% of the energy for the operation of the building would have to keep, be coming from onsite. So this is similar to another density bonus requirement that is currently being considered and I think it's coming for adoption to council soon. And that is for building height because previously, again, we've kind of based everything on step code. And now that a lot of buildings are at the top of the step code, the height bonus of 1.5 meters will be available for those buildings that are exceeding or that are producing 10% of the energy onsite, which is, from what we understand, not a difficult requirement for most buildings to meet. So we're proposing to go a little bit beyond that for a reduced building permit fee to 20% of energy coming from onsite. So essentially, the low-carbon self-sufficient buildings have to meet two requirements. They have to have renewable energy and they have to be either at the top of the step code or 20% of energy coming onsite. In terms of comparison of fees to other jurisdictions, so we did run a four different building permit scenarios, different structures with different values and compared them to what the proposed changes are and then also compared them to four other jurisdictions. So that was city of North Vancouver, District of North Vancouver, West Vancouver and Whistler. So our regular permit fees would be higher than Whistler and the city of North Vancouver. Right now, our fees are close to Whistler. Regular building permit fees would be similar to West Vancouver if proposed changes are adopted and they would still be lower than the District of North Vancouver. The special building permit fee, so all those things that we are proposing to incentivize, like tenant improvements and low-carbon self-sufficient buildings, they would be about 20 to 35% lower than other jurisdictions and more because there's quite a bit of variety between Whistler, city of North Vancouver and for say, for instance, District of North Vancouver. District of North Vancouver probably has the highest fees in the region. In terms of permitting times, it's not something that can be easily done. These are always fluctuating and not a lot of jurisdictions report what the permitting times are. We know that our review times were closer to North Vancouver in January. So they were, you know, Whistler definitely moving faster. But we are somewhere between Whistler and North Vancouver. And again, that's in January. It's been a few months and the situation has changed, particularly for some permits because we've added capacity. And 2020 was a record year in terms of volume and construction activity in general. So we received 50% more building permit applications in 2020 than we did in 2019. And certainly at the beginning of 2020, that is not a scenario that we could see happening just because of the pandemic unfolding. There were also a record number of residential occupancies in the district. So about 600 units received an occupancy permit. And that means our building inspectors are busy doing those final walkthroughs, making sure that the buildings are being completed, especially for bigger projects. That's when our review kind of restarts again because these buildings will be going into construction for a couple of years. They're just submitting reports and then at the end of that process, we have to make sure that all the boxes are being checked. So that's just an indication that a lot of time was spent by building inspectors making sure that these projects are being completed. We do have a relatively small department size compared to some other jurisdictions seeing similar number of permits. We are, we're well under in size. And then there was the COVID-19 impact on the, on our process. We started, we stopped receiving applications at front counter and that certainly had an impact on quality. And then there's the general lack of inspectors locally and a huge demand in the lower mainland for building inspectors at the moment, which makes it really hard to scale up quickly. So what we're doing in this year and the years after that to kind of correct course on building permit timing, we have expanded the department thanks to the BC Restart Grant. We added additional plan reviewers and inspectors, so we're now one and a half employees more than we were in 2020. We will need to retain those staff resources going forward and that's why the fees update is really important because it would potentially allow us, if everything, if construction keeps up, to retain those resources going forward. We are planning to implement a certified professional program. It will, it won't be a very significant difference from what we understand because we are still required to do some review on those big projects, but it will mean that the quality of applications that we receive for complex permits is going to be much higher because there will be another certified professional who has to coordinate all of the plan submissions on their side. We are going, we've gone back to accepting applications at the counter, which allows us to send away applications that are not complete. It is, it was much more involved for us to review everything and then write emails back when people were just dropping things in the box in front of municipal hall. So it's more efficient for us to accept those applications at the counter. And then we are planning for online applications in 2022. So what is the projected impact on revenue? The increase in building permit revenue is projected to be about 10%, could be under than that, under that. We kind of took the new building permit fee structure and applied it to 2020, all the permits we received in 2020 and the result was about a 10% difference. Impact on, as a result of changes to a development permit or rezoning, these is really unpredictable. Those fees fluctuate pretty widely every year based on how many development permits we receive. Really, the bulk of the fees come from big permits and those are fairly unpredictable. In terms of technology lens for application quality, so we are adopting a new system this year. Planning department's already in stream, so we've already adopted the new Tempest system and building department is scheduled to come online later this year. After that, next year, we are planning to launch online applications. So that will be online application submission. Just quickly notable changes, increases from $9 to $11 per thousand of construction value. That's kind of the catch-all for regular permits, building permits, and then decreasing fees from nine to seven for tenant improvements and low-carbon self-sufficient buildings. There's some changes that we're proposing to permanent extensions and then elimination of publicly-owned affordable housing and district facilities. These right now get eliminated by council resolution. So it just, this will not really have an impact on revenue. It will just mean that we don't have to make a trip to council. In terms of planning fee changes, the most notable change is the subarea planning fee. So previously, when we discussed this with council in November, we proposed to raise it to 30,000, I believe. We've since are proposing to raise it significantly to 100,000. And what happens now is when we receive a subarea planning application, it's, it takes a lot of staff resources. So we end up negotiating with the applicant's capacity funding. And if we collected 100,000 right off the bat at application stage, that would essentially eliminate that need for negotiation and would allow us to backfill the planning position for one year automatically when an application comes in. So it's something that we end up charging the applicants anyways in this, at the moment. But that involves some effort and time from staff to kind of go through those negotiations, enter into agreement and then do all sorts of reporting on that. kind of go through those negotiations, enter into agreement, and then do all sorts of reporting on that to the applicants. Uh we're proposing to remove discounts on larger residential development applications and concurrent O C P rezoning applications. And this is just because the planning fees are really not keeping up with the amount of work that and staff resources that we spend on planning applications. So they get substituted quite heavily by building permit fees. And we need to align fees for delegated versus non delegated applications for for larger applications. We've recently um delegated more permits, let's say, like temporary use permits and development permits to staff. Uh but we now need to adjust the fees, because there's still um and uh uh the same amount of or similar amount of uh effort goes in into processing those applications. We just don't need to bring them to council. Um but our delegated fees are really low uh compared to some of the, you know, a big development in the business part. So we need to make sure that those fees are realigned. And then there are a few um increases to subdivision applications uh and then elimination of fees for affordable housing and district facilities. Uh so the staff recommendation is that council receive the report and uh direct staff to bring forward the MN files for readings. We did receive a question from council that I just really um quick quickly wanted to address. How the business licensing fees differ for liquor sales versus cannabis retail? To, as proposed during the first year of operation, cannabis retail fee would be three thousand dollars. Uh liquor sales fee would be a hundred and thirty dollars for the first ninety-three square meters plus fifty per additional nine-three square meters. After that, in the following years, fees will be the same. And the reason why we have, we we need to collect more fees on the first year for cannabis retail is because the province has a requirement for the district to advertise and collect community feedback um before they will issue um or make a decision on a on a license. For liquor sales, uh local governments can opt out of that process. And so in the district, there's a bit of a um, there's a there's a bit of a different approach when it comes to liquor sales and cannabis retail in terms of our policy. We have good policy for cannabis retail in terms of where it can happen, how it can happen. And we don't have the same for liquor sales. So and what we end up doing is if there was a new um, a new liquor store opening up in a location that there previously was not a liquor store, they would have to go through a zoning process. And there would be fees incurred in that uh situation. Uh and from there, the district would opt out from the commenting uh pro- process for the province. Whereas for cannabis retail, we have pretty good policy in place. But those fees are going to be required until the province takes the same approach with cannabis retail as it does with liquor sales, where it allows local governments and First Nations to opt out of the process. I think it's just a byproduct of the fact that this is a new uh regulatory environment for the province. And so they've uh applied kind of the same approach to all commu- communities, uh some of which some communities in B C may not be ready for, may not have a regulatory scheme for cannabis retail. And so they are able to use that commenting process essentially uh uh as an ability to make um to have total discretion over cannabis retail. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Valaniskas, for the presentation. I will go to councillor Frufford first for questions.
Thank you. And that last uh comparison was uh was very enlightening. Would, so if there, just want to make sure I understand, if there hasn't been a um a uh a liquor outlet uh in the in that location pre- in the proposed location previously, it would it would trigger a rezone, which would be cost more than three thousand dollars uh pretty well anyway that we we score it. Um if the, is it the same thing if, I know that we haven't seen this and now we're talking about gifts, but uh if a cannabis, um would there be, would we entertain a lower fee or would there be a lower cost to the district if there was a a new operator taking over a space that had been previously used for uh for cannabis? Or is the comment period the same?
Um, that's a good question. If there was, from our perspective, from a business license perspective, if there was a new somebody could take over somebody else's business license, that's what they would probably do uh if they were taking over a a location. I'm not sure if the province um how the provincial requirements would kick in. I would assume that they would have to do the same. They would have to um kind of redo the processes as if it's a new operation.
Right. And and this is something that we're still early in this, uh so we'll uh yeah, I'm sure the regulations will develop over time for for that one. But thank you for the clarification and that that rezoning point um trumps the to me, the uh the relatively nominal uh three thousand dollar fee up uh from the onset. So yeah, yeah, thank you very much for that.
Councillor Anderson next.
Thank you, uh Mr. Valaniskas. I'd like to ask about the sub area planning fee increase. Uh these days, when we think about upcoming or potential sub area planning processes, we think about large hillside developments like one underway at Crumpet Woods North um where there's one landowner and residential development, uh intensive development with large value lift. But are there not other scenarios for sub area planning processes? And I I think of a couple of examples that may not involve that kind of value lift and maybe more extensive employment lands development. For many years, we've talked about the need or potential for a sub area planning process for the Cheek Eye Fan, for example, that's outside of the Ross Road area. And more recently, it's come up as an idea for Site B, including the area on the east side of the tracks there. Just areas that need some coordination and attention in a sub area planning process mode, but with very different type of characteristics. Can can we see uh this variation in applying fees or thinking about fees? Do you have any response to that?
Thank you. Uh through you chair. Yes, so there are, there's certainly a different, sub area plans are, you know, require different approaches depending on how many properties are involved and where they are. Um the sub area plan requirement is only established for certain properties in the district um that are uh within our growth management boundary or outside of it. Uh and they generally apply to single property ownership type of situations. So I think in that case, uh this is the, this is the, what this fee proposal is targeting. In other cases, uh like Lagers East or any other of the existing community or neighborhoods that we have, that we know we have to do sub area planning for. Those are going to be district led initiatives uh by and large, and so there will be no application fee in that case. Although in some cases, we have collected capacity funding from interested property owners in the area. But uh the intent of this fee is to only apply to these large properties that have been identified in the official community plan as requiring a sub area plan.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Council, other questions? Mayor Elliott and then councillor Cunningham, then councillor French.
Um it seems that the feedback we got from the development com- community was if it improves processing times. And we don't mind the fee increases, but then in your presentation, Mr. Valaniskas, we shy away from actually saying what our processing time should be. Um and also, the report seems to imply that the revenue from the building permit uh fees uh isn't enough to cover new staff entirely. So I'm a little bit confused between that feedback and what we're able to produce at the end of the day.
Yes, uh thank you, uh through you chair. Um we are planning to bring back another report to council later this year as we're getting closer to budget for next year on uh building uh and planning capacity. And you know, it's it's not just building and planning, it's also engineering. Um so it has to be considered holistically, and I think we're going to be look, having to look at a phased approach. Um so the fee increases uh for building permits, if it results in a ten percent revenue increase, you know, that essentially allows us to keep all the resources that we have right now, which is making a difference, making a big difference. Um but we, because we are uh comparatively small as a building department, uh which is where most of the pain is right now, um capacity wise. You know, I think we need to look at a multi-year um expansion strategy uh or capacity improvement strategy. So this will be, this will, the the fee increases will help. Um but it's not going to be the only solution. Uh we're going to need to think about progressively increasing fees or some other strategy. Uh but I guess what I want to say is that we will be bringing another report to council this year that deals with capacity. This this increase just allows us to keep the resources that we have now, because some of those resources we have is are coming from the B C restart grant.
Yeah, so, but we get feedback all the time from the development community about their expectations around processing deadlines. So if we're bringing our report back to council and we're doing workflow improvements through the implementation of Tempest, I would imagine then that later this year, we would be in a position to say um with these workflow improvements and and this capacity that we've gained this year, our processing times can be this. And if we scale it up, it can be this, right? Like, so what what is council going to base its its decision on if not improved service to the community?
Yes, so we we are, we 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 do have targets for um what is kind of the optimal level of service that we can provide given our size. Um and you know, for smaller permits, reg- regular, let's say, single family permits. Um the optimal um review time, uh you know, is about eight weeks. Um and that's what we'd like to get. Because we, it's, the picture is really murky right now, because we received such a huge volume of applications last year. And the closer we got to December, um the more applications we received because of the switch to the to step code. Uh so for instance, on December twenty-fourth, we received thirty applications in one day. Um so until we get through that batch, um and we're already in working in the middle of December. But until we get through that batch, we won't know how much of a difference this additional resource is making. We know it's making things better, uh but I think we will need um three or four months um after we get through December uh permits to see clearly how, what the this new capacity is. And then we're going to have to layer over top of it all the regulatory things that we're adding, um you know, with wildfire. Um we've add, like, part of the pro- part of the reason why we've slowed down is also because of recent changes. Um uh you know, like flood management has had a pretty big impact. Um we're doing uh the zoning in- incentives through the density bonusing that is also going to require more review time. So we will be bringing all of that together in the report to council later this year, but you can just see how complex this can be. Trying to pin an exact timeline.
Absolutely. And and what I want to make sure is that we're matching expectations in the community with what we can, we can deliver. So um so with that in mind, I think it's important that um that we're flagging some of those key applications that have flood considerations or are part of the incentive program to understand who's touching them and for how long um and which parts are taking the longest. And I think, you know, being able to council being able to see some of that data about, you know, a standard, you know, tenant improvement is taking this long and, but something with all of these elements. Here's where the bottleneck is. It actually wasn't in building, it was back in engineering. I don't know. But I think it would be important for us to understand if we're going to be making decisions around budget next year about where those capacity constraints are and why, and how long it's taking to get through right now and where we where we need to get to. So I think that's the direction of my question, is I'm seeing a lot of expectation from the development community in this report. And I'm not feeling totally confident yet, uh and I hear you're bringing us another report that that we can deliver on it. So um as as long as we're sort of thinking about what's the data we can collect right now um so that we can deliver a really robust report later this year, then I'm happy with that. And sorry, Chair, I just have one quick question. When you talk about um private affordable housing, you're talking like the apartments that Waterfront Landings building, right? That's, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh over to councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I'm going to uh stand down on my question for now. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor French.
And my questions were answered as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I had a few questions, many of which were answered, but I wanted to pick up on councillor Frufford's question. Mr. Valaniskas, just about the liquor licensing. Um and I read the business schedule a bit different in that there's a thousand dollar application fee for new liquor primary license with a seven hundred and fifty dollar advertising fee as per Schedule eleven. And I'm just curious why that would be different than what you have previously presented.
Yeah, so let's, thank you for that question. Um we do have the schedule in a, in our fees and charges bylaw that is very rarely used. Um and that is because we, in recent years, we've been going by um by the zoning when it comes to uh liquor primary or food primary establishments. So we opt out of the provincial um commenting, uh and that's something that the province has allowed fairly recently. I think it was three or four years ago that they brought in this change where the local governments are able to opt out of it rather than having to advertise, collect feedback, uh and then provide it to the province. So that is uh that schedule in the fees bylaw, I believe, is a leftover of that area where we had to do these things.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh and then I did also just want to clarify uh on the privately built affordable housing. Um on it, so are there examples of those that are coming forward that are not necessarily a requirement as a C A C policy?
No, we haven't seen any, any of those. They would all be expected to be things that developers committed to um in the uh rezoning process.
I guess I'm kind of curious why we would then waive fees if it was just a requirement of their rezoning.
That's correct. It's a requirement of their rezoning, um but it is something that we've heard from um from the community, and that's the development community as as an issue. Um so we're we're proposing to respond to that.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor Elliott.
So in the same way, we've created a higher bar for adding um around the low carbon piece, so you get a reduction, but you've got to go to like the highest step code and produce some of your own energy. Why wouldn't we say you're paying the building permit fees for affordable housing in a private development? But if you want to exceed that by five more percent, we'd be happy to discount your fees. So aren't, wouldn't we be treating it the same way? An astute question, councillor Stoner. Thank you.
Yeah, we we could do that. I think the chances of chances of somebody um taking that on are are fairly slim. Um because we've, you know, it's the the building permit fees, the savings on building permit fees are not going to be that significant versus the opportunity cost probably for not being able to sell those units.
So then the better way to do it is just change the C A C policy and increase the requirement and then discount the building permit fees.
That's correct.
And we're seeing this C A C policy come back for review at some point in the near future, correct?
I would have to defer to Mr. Buxton uh for that.
You're on mute, Mr. Buxton.
There we go. Um yes, that is scheduled for for this year. Um we we need to scope that project with council before we before we get going to make sure we're answering the right questions.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions, council? Clarification. There is a motion for us to consider. I would like to put that forward. That's that council received a report. Uh and that staff bring forward the associated amended bylaws for consideration, the first three readings. Moved by Councilor Anderson, seconded by Councilor Ferford. Any further comment? The none, I'll call the question, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, council, our next item is scheduled for an hour, so I'm going to suggest that we take a break now. Uh, and come back at, uh, two forty-five, uh, and we'll dive into the next pieces of our agenda. All right, council, committee members, we are back in committee of the whole. Uh, and we are on item seven-two neighborhood process planning discussion. Um, and this is just a discussion for council consideration. I do want to just note that this discussion is really about, uh, the process that we have learned and some lessons learned about the neighborhood planning process, uh, so far. It's not trying to get into the details of the decision that was made around the neighbor, or around the Loggers East neighborhood plan. Uh, just a reminder to folks that we did have one councilor who recused themselves during that, that discussion around the specifics and the vote for the Loggers East neighborhood plan. So, um, if people do want to bring up specifics around that decision, uh, we will hold that discussion to the end. Uh, and we'll give Councilor Ferford the chance to recuse himself. But otherwise, he will be staying and participating for the discussion around the process itself and community engagement in, uh, neighborhood planning. Hopefully that works for everybody. And with that, I will pass it over to staff, Mr. Buxton, am I passing it to you?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilor Stoner, um, yeah, so I, I agreed, and we really want to focus um, this on the, it, it's the process-based discussion and what we can learn from the past process and apply to, um, future neighborhood planning processes. Um, as I, we, we had a small group of the staff that were sort of critically involved in, in the preparation of that plan, go through, uh, a debrief. And you're seeing portions of that, um, we've sort of selected the more important pieces, some of the more tactical stuff, um, we don't need to go through. But, um, I, I won't go through it line by line, particularly the, the layout of the plan, but that's just to establish sort of common understanding of what actually happened. But I say we, we won't go through the content, but just in terms of some of the things we, we found worked well was that, in-person open houses were a better form of, form of engagement, and we got a better representation of interests. For better or for worse, we did, we did hear a, a lot from the most affected stakeholders, that being the, the owners in that, in that situation. But having said that, some of the, the more focused and feedback that we got was better in the online portion in terms of providing better and more detailed direction to, to where the, the content should go. Um, we also found that, um, surveys, surveys that require the, the, um, production of personal information, sort of a double-edged sword. If you don't have it, you can get better responses, that anonymity i- is, seems to get, uh, better responses. But that doesn't allow us to, when you don't have that information, it's more difficult to filter the, uh, the feedback in terms of repetition. Particularly if someone decides to sort of duplicate and repeat their, their feedback, it's more difficult to weed out if you don't have that identif- identifying information. And it's more difficult to then maintain that relationship to follow up through, through ongoing engagement if you don't have that connection. In terms of some of the things that we found that were less effective, um, certainly some of the online tools were less, uh, were less effective at garnering interest and participation. You certainly don't get those, uh, uh, unless you make significant efforts, the online media is far less, it's sort of sparking those spontaneous conversations that can occur in, on, in, in-person forums. And there was a significant gap between phase one and two of the plan. So that's sometimes difficult in, in, in terms of having to restart interest if there's a significant lag between any parts of, of a planning process. In terms of some of the things that, that we learned, particularly from, from the Loggers East processes, that if we can get to in-person engagement, it's probably a better, it's better media. Um, we want to create a variety of, of engagement opportunities, different media, different timing, different processes. Um, but we also need to be prepared, and I think we need to continue to do that, is to be able to adjust to circumstances that arise. So if, um, if circumstances change or the, the quality of feedback you're getting isn't there, you may need to shift on the fly and not be, um, beholden to a fixed process at the start. Um, one important thing we need to probably do with all of our neighborhood planning processes is to, is to, early on in the process, have an initial meeting or engagement forum to clearly articulate what's guiding the plan. Of course, we don't come to these, um, come to these processes with a blank sheet of paper. There's something that's, that's creating the impetus, and there's plenty of policy that we have both in the O C P and other planning documents that provide process. So everyone at the table needs to know that before we get started. Um, as noted previously, we're going to have to find that balance between collecting personal information to allow us to sort of continue and connect with people with, um, the fact that it, it can degrade your, if you're acquiring people to, to sign up for online forums or, or put personally identifying information on surveys or responses, then you can degrade the, the quantity and quality of the information we're collecting. So there's a bit of a balance to strike there. Um, avoid gaps and, and try and stick to that timeline as, as, as close as possible. What we find is that if you, you have a significant gap between phases, you can end up having to redo some of the work you've done previously. So if you set a timeline, let's try and stick to it as close, as close as possible. Um, one thing particularly with the Loggers East was that, um, if, if you have sort of break between the initial round of sort of scoping and idea generation, to go back with a feedback summary about what we heard and how that can inform the process, rather than going back at that point as we did with a, with a draft plan, sort of take a more iterative approach. Again, one of the other ones is, is to be flexible, if you're not getting the, if you're not getting the engagement that you want, you're getting a more select set of participants, um, to think about going back and, and pivoting. Um, and I think to try and, one of the learnings from Loggers East was because we started with a relatively small set of highly affected stakeholders in terms of the landowners. Is how we share that information with them, uh, and to make sure that that information sharing is getting out into the community so that there, there isn't an imbalance of awareness or understanding of, of where we might be or what we're doing. So that, that's sort of the, the process-based information that we, that we sort of divined from a, from a, a short review of the Loggers East process. Some other options that we, that we just sort of put on the table here, those last half a dozen bullets for the, the council's consideration. Are some more general issues that we could consider going forward is whether we want to think about things like a steering committee comprised of specific stakeholder groups. We can identify those, um, and, and you might be able to use that group across various planning processes. Um, language-based materials, um, are probably a good idea where you, where you can, where that's necessary. Part of that committee may involve the identification of specific stakeholder profiles or groups that you want to seek out. Um, that sort of, if we think there's a missing demographic, can we identify them and can we engage with them? I mean, some groups are not homogenous, and, and we can't assume that engaging with one is representative of that group. But are there opportunities where we can perhaps identify groups and suitable stakeholders? An option to, to the committee idea would be that you, if you've identified those missing or those identified stakeholder groups, is, is to target them specifically with whatever process or medium that you have. And that's just finally is that those tend to come with additional time and resource needs when you get into those more specific and, and targeted exercises. So we really just wanted to put some ideas on the table and, and some things that we'd seen, uh, staff during the Loggers process and sort of seed a discussion for, for council to pick up. So if, hopefully there aren't many questions coming out of that, hopefully we can, we can move straight to the discussion. But if council does have anything that, that is unclear, Jonas and I can sort of try and answer your, answer your questions.
Thank you for the overview and the kickoff, Mr. Buxton. I saw Councilor Reese's hand, and then I have Mayor Elliot.
Thank you, um, thinking back about that particular project, um, I guess, uh, in hindsight, I would have preferred to see the scope expanded a little bit, um, in the sense that, uh, for example, what happens with properties along Centennial Way? What happens with properties to the south down Loggers Lane where there's presently kind of semi-industrial, um, occupations? Yes?
Sorry, this, I'm getting flagged from Ms. Arthur's here around separation of process and details of Loggers East. Yep. Because we still have.
No, but this is, this, the, that, the point is those were not in the Loggers East plan. I'm talking about the scope of the sub-area. And I don't, I'm not second guessing what happened inside the plan.
Yeah, so I, I think the, the, the issue there is let's be very careful about the actual area that we, that we select for the, for a sub-area plan.
Well, and the second part of my comment was also going to be connectivity. Uh, when you look at that particular one, you know, is there, are there other connections that we should be thinking about when we put that plan together? And Valley Cliff is, is one, and Centennial's another that just come to mind, or even a, another, um, entrance on the Loggers Lane. So, so it's that kind of looking just beyond the plan a little bit. Um, because we're left now with an area that, a larger area, going from Centennial down to practically the Adventure Center where we've, we've figured out part of it, uh, but there's a lot of it in my mind at least, it's still kind of, I don't know. And so if there are, if there are natural separations or something, um, that, between what we did study and what we didn't study, then I think we want to make those clear. I mean, they're not clear to me now, frankly, um, if there were distinctions, we focused on a relatively small area to start with uh, and stayed within that area. And I'm just wondering if, maybe not to the same level, but at least when you're talking about lands beyond and connectivity and so forth, uh, it's maybe a lesson to take. And the next, next step item on the agenda, uh, is one example of that, where there's all kinds of lands beyond, and how do we deal with that? So it's just a, it's a scoping issue.
Agreed, that, that relates back to the point that we need to be clear about, you know, what's in, what's out, and what's driving this at the beginning of the, beginning of the process. So they're actually answering the questions that council wants answered.
Thank you, councilors, uh, Mayor Elliot.
Thank you, um, and thanks for this analysis. Um, I think it's really important, um, given we've got several more of these to do. Um, it, with regard to the electronic engagement, I think that it's here to stay. And, um, and even post-pandemic, there will still be people that don't or can't make it to, um, uh, an in-person gathering. And so I think my observation of the way we did the electronic engagement wasn't engaging. And we didn't really use some of the tools that are out there, uh, to enable breakout rooms or, or people writing on post-it notes or brainstorming. Like, we didn't, um, drive innovation around digital engagement. And I think, um, certainly if, if our district hasn't learned it, lots of others have figured out how to do it over the pandemic. And so I think we need to rethink how we engage digitally, but it absolutely should be part of the process. Going forward, uh, as well as in-person as, as we can do it. Um, the other piece about Mr., what Mr. Buxton, you said around what's driving this? And I feel like we should break that down a little bit. Like, here are the social drivers, the environmental drivers, and then as we learn them, the technical, um, driver, so in Loggers East, it would storm water management, it became a very, it was both an environmental but also a technical uh, issue that we had to grapple with. So I, I feel like we should sort of clearly state that, as you say, for the community. And the other one is climate, and climate is the one that, um, should be at the forefront and needs to get there in neighborhood planning at the beginning. Um, about what we're trying to achieve with more walkable neighborhoods and, um, in neighborhood hubs. And, and we already have a group studying, you know, the, the health benefits of, of the kinds of neighborhoods we're trying to build. So I think how we incorporate our community climate action plan and our goals into neighborhood planning, we should actually think about um, at the beginning. And finally, I think we have to, we talk about this as terms of like the stakeholders were the people that, that live there. But at the beginning and at the end, there's some way, as you say, that we need to try and engage the broader community in that. And there's a real equity lens. So in the next neighborhood, we're talking about Garibaldi Estates. So there's no, you know, what people see when they think about or often think about Garibaldi Estates is large lots, uh, expensive homes. Um, but there's also some longstanding existing purpose-built rental tucked in there and, and commercial. And so this whole equity lens, um, and how do we make sure that we're engaging, uh, groups that help represent that we're trying to build a community for all and that all demographics belong in all neighborhoods? And I, I don't think I have necessarily the solution to that. Is it a committee or is it just, um, focused engagement with some of those key stakeholder groups? But I think we really missed that in our first neighborhood plan is, um, we talked to a lot of landowners and, and that, that neighborhood, but we didn't broaden our view and say, how does this help achieve um, our goals as a community? And it, this community belongs to all of us, every single neighborhood. So how do we make sure that that influences that? Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elliot, I have, uh, Councilor French, then Councilor. You're still on mute, Councilor French.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, we can hear you now, we've got you, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I keyed into the notes about use of engagement materials in other languages. And I'm wondering, is there, is there more to this thought? Or is staff just throwing this out as an idea potentially moving forward?
No, it, it, it's certainly something that we could do if, if there's a linguistic group that we think, um, is underrepresented based on, um, accessibility on language issues. So if we think that there is a linguistic group, we can, we can tran, we can start to translate materials that make those more accessible.
Okay, great, so just one, one more thought on this. I certainly support our upcoming Mount Comus Estates neighborhood plan, work being translated to Punjabi. Um, the area is home to, uh, many Punjabi speakers that, that I know of, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor French, Councilor Pedingale.
Yeah, thank you, uh, two things I want to comment on. I appreciate, uh, staff's comment about identifying at the start, the, sort of the guiding policy and, and the things we'll pay attention to. I think the mayor, um, alluded to it as well. Um, you know, I did raise during the last neighborhood plan, some concerns about alignment with some of our policy and, and, and how I thought things should be aligned, uh, or what I was looking for to sort of define that alignment. And so I'm glad to, to see that's in there. The other piece that I wanted to highlight for me, and I think it, it, it's, uh, similar to what the mayor was mentioning, but, um, the dentful neighborhood plan predated me as a councilor. But my perception of that was, you know, there's some infill opportunity there, but the plan was largely informed by people living there who intended to sort of be there for the long haul, and that kind of defined a lot of it. With the neighborhood plan we did, I felt like there was a lot of feedback, um, from large developers or people who had property that were looking for, uh, you know, to ensure a lucrative exit, um, as part of what came out of this. And a little less feedback from those that as part of what came out of this, and a little less feedback from those that were looking for this to be, it's their home now. And that's going to be their home for the long term, and this is what they want their neighborhood to look like. You know, I think as a council, we tried to pay attention to that and, and plan for a, a good neighborhood. But for me, that, that was a big difference. And intuitively, I was, I kept finding myself feeling like we should be doing it more like the dent fill or taking that sort of perspective more. And, and that may not be a, a fair or correct way to look at things. But that is a feeling I, I had, and maybe that's worth a bit of thought or consideration about, you know, who should be driving these, these neighborhood plans, really.
Thank you councillor Pedengill. I have councillor Herford, and then I'll put myself on the list.
Thank you. My question is around the, two sort of contradicting points that I find myself agreeing with both of them. So I wonder if I would get some feedback here. I, I suppose that's the, sort of the general idea that, that the public engagement isn't, you know, a box to tick. It's, it's, we're trying to get, actually get the engagement and get the feedback so we can incorporate it into the plan. And if it's not, if we haven't achieved whatever we, threshold of, of feedback, then we need to circle back and, and change the engagement and, and reassess. And I suppose, and I like that concept, but then the other concept was to keep moving and to stick to the original timelines. So that the project doesn't have big lag times between engagements. And we can actually get it to the line at a predictable time. So how did, how does, how has staff been balancing those two needs so far? And, and proposing to in future?
I don't know that we have. I think that's why we flagged, flagged it as an issue. I mean, part of the lags were, were sort of externally pushed upon us. You, you, you start a, a neighborhood planning process and then a pandemic breaks out. Inevitably, something wasn't going to, wasn't going to run on schedule. You can pivot and, and maintain, you can pivot and maintain timelines, provided you throw more resources at it. So it's time, money and effort, pick two. So if I, if I need, if I need more time, I'm probably going to need more effort. So I, I don't know them mutually exclusive, except to the, to the point that if, if you want to both pivot and maintain time, you're probably going to have to throw more, more, more people and/or money at it to, to make sure you can maintain both. But in the absence of those, it's very difficult to do that.
So, thank you. Follow-up if I, if that's okay, Chair. Yeah, so does that, does that mean sort of building in a, a buffer for that type of, I know that we can't anticipate all the, all the delay, anticipate the anticipated, but it seems that there's always a bit of a glitch. So whether that's holding back some, some capacity, knowing we're going to have to apply a little bit more of it to an unknown spot? Or how does that sort of get managed through the, through the project rather than just being a, a big, a more major stumbling block that it needs to be? Once we, once we find that spot where the sticking point is, inevitably there's one.
I, I think the, the best way to do it would be to budget accordingly. It, it is essentially budget the same way that we do if we're building a building. Is, we know it costs, let's say, a million dollars to build the building, but we put a, we put 1.1 million in the budget because we know something isn't probably going to pan out as we thought. So the public engagement process would probably be designed in the same way as we, we know this is going to cost us $50,000. So we should probably put $55,000 in so that if we need to pivot, we've got some, some resources available to do that.
Thank you. A few thoughts for me. Can I just, when I think of the, the timeline for our previous neighborhood plan? And I appreciate that there were some external factors, but I also think that the delivery of some of the technical components really drove some of the timeline. And maybe I have that wrong, so staff can correct me if I do. But like the stormwater management plan took longer than expected. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think we flagged that as the last bullet on the second page is that if there are, if there are critical technical elements of that nature, it's, it's not essential that they're done first. But it's essential that they're done at a specified point in the timeline. And I don't think we've done that, and it did take longer. So I think, again, planning accordingly, that if there's critical information that's, that's essential to conditioning the plan, then we need to know when that's going to be and make sure that it, it arrives at that point in time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that's a bit of a chicken and an egg, but it was definitely something that, as I reflected on this, I think probably also pivoted a lot of the feedback that we were getting and the draft plan that we put forward because there was so much information and pertinent information that came from that technical report in terms of kind of defining the direction of that plan. And so as I thought through this a little bit, I definitely appreciate the, the suggestion to, to be clear on what is driving the plan and, and what the policy guidance is there. But then also being very clear on the scope of the technical information that we're going to need and when we expect to do that. And then plan the public engagement around that so that we don't have that lull in the middle that, where we tend to just, just lose some interest from the public. And then on the engagement side, I have to agree with Mayor Elliott that I don't think it's a, going forward, it won't be an either or option in terms of in-person or digital. It'll be both. As much as that will be a require, that increases our capacity requirements to do that. I, I just think it's going to be a reality going forward. There will always be folks. I appreciate that in-person engagement results in different types of conversations. But we can't discount the fact that a lot of people can't show up to City Hall or somewhere at 7:00 PM on a Wednesday night. The online engagement does allow for that and allows for a different level of engagement and transparency that I think we will need to maintain. I think we need to be a bit more creative in terms of the, the style and format of engagement that we use. And even just as councillor, receiving some of the feedback from the online engagement. It was really difficult to actually get a sense of, of what those discussions were, what the summary was. Just on the, what we had received in the previous neighborhood plan. So I think some further thought on how we do digital engagement will definitely be necessary going forward. That's my high-level thoughts for now. Councillor Anderson, did you have anything you wanted to add at this time?
Yes, thank you. Firstly, this is a very useful, helpful report. I found myself reading it, thinking ahead to the upcoming Lot 515, a planning process ahead. However, I don't think we should, I think we should also appreciate what we achieve with this and not underestimate the, the, the quality of our process. That is, it had its handicaps, the stormwater management thing, our COVID situation. But this is a good product. But I think that I'd like to echo councillor Race's points regarding scope. And this is in hindsight, but the subdivision to the north was itself an issue in that it did not, was not encompassed in this type of planning process. There were issues of fairness for property owners. There were people in, on the nor, in the subdivision of the north that had their comments. Ideally, we would have taken in the whole area. The, this has however, been addressed in the upcoming proposal for the Lot 515. And I'll quote from that report that we'll discuss later. "The planning process will not be limited to the subject lands. The neighborhood plan will account for natural conditions, values and needs and opportunities in the larger area." So this is very important and it should be an important lesson. We heard this not only from property owners with specific concerns about fairness, but also from people like Mr. Pierre Prilh, who's talked about the natural conditions of the area that were underappreciated and that belonged, or their consideration belonged in a larger context. So I think that that scope issue is very important. Secondly, I don't think we should be relying, overly relying on electronic engagement. We have in these neighborhoods, Wilson Crescent, Loggers Lane East and upcoming in Garibaldi Estates, longtime residents. These are communities. People have been there for four or five decades and they have local knowledge to share. And it is the case that many of these people with that local, local knowledge are not plugged into computers. We had a fellow, the, the longest resident in Loggers Lane East, his first language is Swiss German. And he knows a lot about the local water courses, which was certainly an issue. But, so I just think that we have to understand the neighborhoods for the communities they are and the people that are there and the local knowledge that we need to tap into. And that is not going to be by electronic engagement in all cases. So we have to leave that door open and, and plan for it and push it as far as we can in the circumstances we're dealing with. That's it for me. Thank you.
You councillor Anderson, I'll go back to Mayor Elliott.
Sorry, there were two things. One is early engagement with Squamish Nation to understand any historical context for the neighborhood in which we're working, which would help us with place names or stories or, or context that, that we could work with the nation to share, if that's appropriate with the neighborhood. And the other is that we are just working on our first sense-making session around the community stories piece with our core team. But there are stories there about what makes a community and/or a neighborhood or what people gain from the neighborhood. So it may be a good place for our staff to start and just having a session around hearing what folks had to say in the community about their learnings from this pandemic, about their community or what they gained from their neighbors that might help inspire some thinking around our next neighborhood plan. So I just wanted to put those two things on the table.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Councillor Further, thoughts or comments? Staff, are there any other items that you would like specific direction or, or feedback on?
No, I'll, if, if council will humor me, I'll just give you a sort of a 30-second overview of what I've, of what I've heard to make sure that I've at least caught most of the salient issues. So scoping will be critical intensive, both in, in, in respect to both extents and issues and the guiding policy, particularly around climate change action plan and equity issues. And those conditioning precursor information to broaden the stakeholder groups to reflect that, particularly that equity lens. Electronic, but better in person as well. Contingency funding, use of language, appropriate language materials and early engagement with Squamish Nation was probably seven or eight points that I, I've taken from this.
That captured most of what I heard. I, there was also a suggestion in the staff report around uses of steering committee. I didn't hear any feedback specifically on that. I'm curious if council has any initial thoughts on the use of a steering committee as a engagement tool for, for the neighborhood planning process. Mayor Elliott.
I was thinking about this in conjunction with our conversation around the inclusion, diversity, equity and access discussion and about a community-based committee that would inform that work at the district. And I would see something like a neighborhood plan or the engagement for the neighborhood plan going in front of that kind of committee to make sure that we are finding ways to access diverse communities with our engagement. And, and when we think about a neighborhood, are we, are we ticking those boxes? So I would rather not see a committee, I think, around each neighborhood plan, but rather that, that committee to help us think more broadly as a community about inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility.
Thank you for those thoughts. Anybody else? Councillor Anderson?
I think that there will be varied circumstances for these planning processes with respect to thinking about a steering committee. And the steering committee, I think, might be valuable for, for, in all cases, but different, in different ways. In, in the case of the Loggers East Plan, there was a fair bit of self-organizing on the part of that community. And that assisted us in bringing people out and in summoning inputs and information. In a case like Lot 515 or some of the other hillside developments that may be upcoming in future, we have one landowner. And the stakeholders that might be identified might be community organizations like Trails or Sorka or something of that nature. Different type of committee, different purpose. But I think that this type of level of, this type of a tool could be valuable in, in each of these cases, but in different ways. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Anderson. Let us say, my initial thoughts when I read through it was I did have some concerns in terms of trying to establish a steering committee for each neighborhood plan. And specifically just in terms of managing those committees, ensuring that they are diverse and attendance at them is, is equal. And so I, I definitely go back and forth in terms of, in some ways it can be a useful tool, but I definitely lean more towards a broader committee that would ensure that across the board, our engagement strategies are inclusive and diverse and, and reaching the, the different populations that we know need to be represented in various conversations. Because it's not just an issue that we have with neighborhood planning, it's, it's an issue that we have more broadly across the district. Was just my thinking on that piece. All right, council, any further comments? Being done, and there's no motion in front of us. Hopefully that discussion was helpful to staff. I'm sure we will have lots more to talk about, both in our next agenda item, as well as when the Garibaldi Estates plan comes forward for some scoping.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. And we just gained 20 minutes, council. That's also very exciting. All right, we will continue on. We have next on our agenda is District Lot 515 Neighborhood Plan Application. And I think we're passing it over to Mr. Ellis for a very timely discussion on the heels of our last item.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just, again, sharing my screen. Please let me know if you can see the presentation.
We can see the presentation. No, you just need to pop into presentation mode. That's great.
Perfect. So greetings again. My name is Jonas Valenischkis. I'm the Director of Community Planning here. And today I am introducing an official community plan amendment application to develop a neighborhood plan for a portion of District Lot 515. So the intent of today's presentation is to introduce the application and gather some preliminary feedback from council. So here we've got the area, District Lot, or part of District Lot 515 is located just north of Crumpet Woods and, and Cherry Drive Neighborhoods in Valley Cliff. It's a large site, 103 hectares, surrounded by quite a few Squamish Nation holdings, land holdings, a little bit of crown land. Some, some residential neighborhoods along the Crumpet Woods and Cherry Drive. Pretty substantial district park, small bluffs. And the property is within the growth management boundary. Just on the edge of it, it does have a major utility corridor running through it. It's identified in yellow here. And I think that's all I wanted to say about, oh, one more thing I will say is that it is located in close proximity to the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan area, as you can see up here. And in between those areas is essentially the Squamish Nation lands property. So for land use context, it is designated in our official community plan as a residential neighborhood and subject to a sub-area planning process. It is inside the growth management boundary. In terms of OCP policies, so obviously the sub-area planning. In terms of OCP policies, so obviously the subarea planning policies explicitly apply to this application. The before any development can happen on this property, the official community plan requires adoption of a what it calls a subarea plan, what we now refer to as a neighborhood plan. So the OCP has some specific policy to this portion of District Lot 515. It came about last year when the district rezoned the lands to RM5. Along with that rezoning came a number of OCP policies. So there's, these are just listed here. It requires a subarea plan. It supports applications that provide as much or more residential density than possible under the previous RS1 zoning. And allows for increase in residential density when that density enables the development of a complete walkable community. It also has some consideration for future land uses in terms of range of housing forms. Small lot allowance for small lot unit dwellings. A range of house forms should emphasize missing middle forms, including duplexes, droplets, fourplexes. And other forms of density such as townhouses and apartments. It also has consideration for employment space to reflect the needs of the neighborhood and the community. Now, the OCP policy considerations for neighborhood planning, I will not take the time to go through all these. They are quite extensive in our OCP. And they cover off most aspects of land use planning, not all, but but most. There are other neighborhood planning considerations that need to be considered beyond what's outlined in the OCP policy. So that is is some basic planning things like neighborhood vision and guiding principles that need to be established at the beginning. Climate change mitigation strategies, OCP refers to responding to climate change. But I think we need to also be explicit about mitigating climate change. Population estimates for the area, employment space needs and local services. So we need to take a good assessment of what local services there are in the area, what the community can support. And also think about, you know, the changing trends and needs of our community in terms of local services in the face of a more walkable communities. Affordable housing and market rental targets. So that is something that we did with the Loggers East Neighborhood Plan that is useful. And I think this is an opportunity to consider whether non market homeownership can be incorporated in the housing targets and policy for this plan area. So so far, our affordable housing strategy has been largely based on affordable rental housing. But I think this is an opportunity to consider whether that could be expanded in this area. Assessment of emergency response capacity. Childcare space targets, again, that is something that we did in the Loggers East that I think it should be addressed here. Obviously childcare is a critical need in our community. Then we've got design guidelines and principles to cluster compact development. So we can protect larger contiguous areas and limit our infrastructure needs. We need to consider streetscape standards specific to this neighborhood. Connectivity to Loggers East, obviously. And there are a number of access issues. They are natural constraints related to District Lot 515. That will need to be examined in the planning process. The planning process itself, so we, one of our senior planners, Matt Gunn, is assigned to this file and he's been working with the applicants to come up with a general outline of the planning process. And so we've sort of identified 10 stages in the process. The first stage we that we've already passed is the pre application discussions we had with the applicants defining the area and kind of preliminary dust up analysis that is required to inform the application. We've since received the application. We are now at stage two. So we're introducing this to council for preliminary feedback. And there's already some preliminary engagement steps being taken in the background with Squamish Nation. And identifying some of the key stakeholder groups that are perhaps low hanging fruit in terms of stakeholders, but there's more work to be done there. From there, we will be entering an information gathering stage. So this is where all the background reports are being done. And we're also going to be kind of coming back to counsel to endorse the engagement plan. The applicants have outlined sort of general steps in the engagement process, but those need to be further refined with staff and they will come back to counsel. For from there on, we essentially have three major rounds of community engagement. So we start with the first round. As a result of that, we develop land use options. Then we go into the second round to review those options with the community. As a result of that, we we develop a preferred option and go back for the third round of engagement to present the preferred option. And then from there on drafting the neighborhood plan and from there on proceeding to bylaw consideration by council. So the official community plan does have a high standard for engagement when it comes to neighborhood planning. We need to identify aspirations, needs and concerns. And make sure that the community understands the rationale, benefits and consequences of the proposed policy. Those are kind of the two key objectives as stated in the OCP. Coordinate engagement activities will be between the applicant and staff. So staff are going to be overseeing engagement because this is a private application on a private on one piece of property. The applicants are going to be doing quite a bit of legwork as compared to, you know, Loggers East, which was a district led initiative. Especially at the beginning of the process. So we are expecting that as the the process moves through the the planning stages that staff will be taking a larger and larger role in engagement. And then especially when it gets closer to drafting the plan and leading that through the bylaw reading process. We are going to have to address the challenge of ensuring that we have broad and lasting engagement. That was an issue with Loggers East. And so I think the way to tackle that is we need to plan for it. We didn't really expect the lack of engagement in Loggers East. And obviously there was a pandemic in the middle. But I think that this challenge can be solved by planning for it and actively pursuing engagement with especially with those groups that we know are not regularly represented in the in in community planning process. One way of doing that, so a committee would be one one way of doing that. Another way, and that may be more appropriate because this is one property with one property owner is identifying a broad range of community stakeholders. And then making sure that we are engaging with them throughout the planning process and not just in those public engagement rounds. The three rounds that we've identified earlier, but throughout the process in every planning stage. We identify stakeholders that we can either snowball to other stakeholders. Or we can make sure that those unrepresented voices are captured. And it is, I I I'm just going to say that I think from experience, it is pretty natural that when you do a a larger development or a neighborhood plan that in the first round of engagement, you kind of get broader engagement. And then as the process goes on and the longer it takes that engagement peters out and you just are left with that group of parties that have a stake in the area. So I think that if we identify a broad range of stakeholders and are actively engaging with them rather than expecting them to come to us, that could be something that that is suited well for this sort of a neighborhood plan. And then engagement feedback will be assembled and presented to council after each round of engagement. So the staff recommendation is that committee that council receive the report for information. And also we're welcoming any feedback at this point. It's preliminary. We did get a few questions from council before the meeting, so I just want to quickly address those. Staff to provide more information on the issues highlighted in the application regarding access to and through the lands on to Finch. So I just wanted to clarify that the OCP does indicate that access through the lands to connect Cherry with Finch needs to be considered for traffic management and emergency access. The OCP does have a specific policy in our major transportation section. There are natural constraints though, as I mentioned earlier, as and as the application identifies to accessing this this area. So Cherry Drive seems to be the natural access and it's also the place where our OCP identifies as a connection point to the lands beyond. However, there are some environmental issues around that area and there's also some legal constraints. The province has a covenant on the lands. So that is something that we will be investigating further based on environmental constraints and whether other improvements could be made as a result of putting an access through that point. The proponents have identified other points of access as well, and you can see those here. So one is off of Crumpet Woods, which is which involve quite significant terrain for road building. Then there's access through Moncrum Service Road. That is also not ideal. Essentially from a preliminary look, Cherry Drive looks like an ideal access point from a transportation perspective. But we need to investigate whether that is feasible or beneficial from an environmental perspective as well. There was a question about how will the future of Westway and Finch Access Road be addressed in Transportation Network Plan and impact assessments? So in response to that, connectivity to lands beyond will be a principal consideration in the transportation transportation studies. And it may have an impact on area density and things like streetscape design. But it really it is too early to be able to speak to that. We're just in the very initial stages. And then there was a question around terrain of Lot 515 encompassing floodplain and high water table. So there is the southern portion of District Lot or portion of District Lot 515. It's it's actually this area around here that is contained within a floodplain. It's an overland flow area. And there may be a high water table in that area. We don't know that yet, but we'll be finding that out. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Valenischkes. Counsel questions? Mayor Elliott and Counsel French.
So the applicant has seemed to provided a timeline that puts us on a one year kind of horizon. But then you raised issues around access, including a provincial covenant and potentially discussions with Squamish Nation. And so don't, doesn't that access issue need to be figured out before we can do the planning? And 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 so is that, I I just don't want for the applicant to come back and say, we wanted to do this in a year. Because that doesn't seem like a you know, going back to what we just talked about, trying to get the stormwater management plan should have been done before we really started to dive deep on the neighborhood planning because it sort of delayed everything. So the access issue seems to be this crux. Until you solve that, why would you dive deep with all these community groups on on planning that neighborhood until you sort that out? So I would, so is it wrong to think the timeline shouldn't start until we work that out?
Absolutely. For you, Chair, that's a great question. It is something that we communicated to the applicant that, you know, this is your timeline. And this is not necessarily how this process will move. And it is more than likely that it will take longer than what your timeline is. So we attach the application for council's information. I just, but I just don't want to caution that everything in that application isn't something that we better than agree to. It's it's a, it's the applicant's expectation and we have advised them that it is. It is, it may not be realistic and you're absolutely right, that access point is a critical issue at the moment. And so that's we've, we've tasked the applicants with providing us with environmental information that will prepare us better for determining which way to go.
Okay. And then just on the sort of the 10 step process. I was wondering why a draft neighborhood plan wouldn't come forward at step seven, the preferred option before it goes to the third round of public engagement? And people can start to see the language around the draft plan and and how it starts to shape up because then if you save that draft writing of the plan until nine, then the only public engagement we get is at first reading or public hearing. So I wonder what technically might have been missing at step seven that we wouldn't try and wrap a bit of a draft neighborhood plan around that preferred concept?
Through you, Chair, that's a really good comment. I think that we can with with development of options, also bring forward policy, draft policy, maybe some of the major draft policy. Doesn't get all tied up until till, you know, that after that point, but there's no reason why we couldn't do that at at option development.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I missed this. Where where are we addressing the the climate policy pieces of this in which stage?
So that will be that will be, that would be driven together with land use development options.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor French next.
Thanks, Chair. And that timeline timeline also jumped out at me and didn't think that it was particularly realistic. So agreeing with the mayor around that timeline issue. And my question related to that's answered. And then on the access situation, I'm curious to know if High Creek Drive had has always intended to be a cul-de-sac up at the top? Or is that a potential access point?
Let me just pull up the map again. Oh, I see that Mr. Merrill here. I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Jonas. Through the chair, good afternoon, Dave Merrill, Director of Major Projects. I believe the question was the top of High Creek Drive. Is that, is that correct?
Yes. Was that always intended to be a cul-de-sac or could that be an access point to the subject lines?
Yes. So through the mayor, the, that was originally intended to be a potential access point to lands beyond when the Crumpet Woods development was created. However, practically speaking, it's not an ideal location to have a major access point to high density area. They're windy, steep streets. You know, difficult access through an existing residential residential local streets essentially. So it is a potential option. However, ideally, we look at these other options that are on the table. Albeit with challenges, but I think they're potentially not insurmountable challenges. But yes, that is a a potential option that could be used in one way or another in in the future.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I have Counselor Race next.
Thank you. And the report talks about things to consider that the OCP calls for. And one of them is the possibility of a neighborhood energy system. And we've kind of abandoned that in the downtown area. Is that still something that's on the table?
Through you, Chair. That's correct. It's an OCP policy. So we will consider everything initially in that on that list. There are things like a neighborhood energy system that might not make it much further past the initial stages. A consideration has to be given.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Race. I have Counselor Peddingdale next.
Yeah, thanks. Just given some of the previous discussion, I I'm wondering when staff comes to us with asking for approval for a engagement plan. Is there a way to make that flexible? And I guess in my perfect world, at least at this point, what I would like to approve is something like that we will accept a plan that demonstrates representative feedback of the neighborhood and and maybe putting some a little bit more criteria around that as opposed to there will be three online sessions and for for this and that. And so if the the proponent wants to do with online offline pizza parties or however they want to do it, I'm not so concerned about that as long as they can provide me good evidence that it really reflects what the community is thinking. And so I'm wondering if staff can speak to if there's a way to do that, or is is that the sort of thing we have in mind for an engagement plan and what sort of approval you'll be looking for?
Through you, Chair. That's a really good point. One thing that we learned in the past years that we have to be flexible. So this the the plan that we come back with or the strategy for council's endorsement will certainly need to consider that flexibility, and it will unlikely delve into that much detail in terms of, you know, how many sessions we're going to be doing or how many meetings, but we'll outline the tools we'll be using.
Counsel, any further questions? Counselor Anderson?
Are you ready for comments? I basically had the questions I brought forward already addressed by Mr. Melaniscus.
Let's hold on comments for just a second. I have a few clarifying questions myself. And I recognize that this is within the growth management boundary, but there is some ongoing policy work that that would be very relevant, and particularly the steep slopes development or guidelines that are being developed this year. I'm just curious how staff see that ongoing policy work incorporated into the timeline for this as well.
Thank you, Chair. So we will be developing in specific policies of steep slopes for this area based on the assessment, the geotechnical assessment. The steep slopes development policy, we expect will be covering sort of all the areas that don't go through this detailed assessment. But I think we'll be able to address deep slopes conditions here through the planning through the neighborhood planning process in the absence of the steep slopes policy.
Thank you. And then just also on that timeline, I'm just curious how this works. Like, the mayor has identified one critical area of decision that I think we need feedback on before we can really start to look at a timeline. There are probably others in that list that we could probably fairly quickly identify as like necessary to have this information to make informed decisions. So how does the development of the timeline process work now that the application is in? Like, do we set a list of critical items that need to be addressed before we bring back an engagement plan? Or do we do those in parallel?
I would suggest that we do those in parallel, and perhaps by the time we come back with an engagement plan, we have, for instance, the access point, more information on the issue of the access point. I think some of these issues like the access point, you know, we might come up with a strategy of how to tackle it, but we that will still be lingering as we go into the engagement process. And there may still be options on a table in terms of what the solution is. So I think if there's something that counsel wants to see come back other than the access point together with the engagement strategy, then yes, like counsel could identify that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Anderson, over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to first address the access issue, and I have comments on a couple of themes, but I'll start with that. The Cherry Drive route, I can imagine one of the issues and may perhaps an issue behind the covenant, and I'm assuming that covenant came in not too long ago, is the issue of the groundwater for the Little Squamish Creek. That creek is very valuable for Koho. It's one of the best Koho streams in the whole valley, and the reason is because of the groundwater resource that feeds it. This is also an issue for the pipeline construction. It would be optimal to take this route, and I perhaps it's just going to cost more money. And that's an you ask an engineer, well, how many how many dollars do you have to spend on it? We can solve this. I hope so, because we need to keep in mind that this access route is not just for this development, but for all of Valley Clip proper. We have a very congested couple of intersections up at Clark Drive and Burner Drive intersections onto the highway there, and it's only going to get more congested as Scott Crescent comes online. And a large part of that southbound Scott Crescent traffic will go through there. It's already congested today, and it's a school zone and hospital zone as well. So this is a longstanding desire. It was removed from the last OCP. It was in the 1998 OCP and then removed, and now it's back in there again as it should be. But this is important process will 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 be a major feature. It's inevitable, I see, I think. Secondly, the there is a substantial attention in the report before us on jobs to housing ratio, and that jobs to housing ratio balance can looked at in term within within the scope of this neighborhood. I think we have to be realistic about we how we apply that objective. And that and I'm looking before a before me a table from last October on the Low Carbon and Smart Growth Neighborhoods Incentive Program presentation. The real imbalance we have is at the bottom of the table, and that is for the community as a whole. And if we look at planning practice and across the border, they have a lot of experience in applying this jobs to housing ratio, and they do not focus on applying it at the neighborhood scale. It is community wide, and this is for all sorts of factors. So we need to be realistic about this. The that is to properly prioritize the community wide jobs to housing ratio imbalance issue. Secondly, there is also a lot of emphasis on employment and as there should be and on economic impact. And as part of that, we should also keep in mind that the construction of this development, the construction jobs and local purchasing involved are a big part of it, and we should be having an eye to this as we develop our plans and our monitoring and our evaluation. The construction jobs will be very important and will be a big part of the economic impact of this neighborhood and what it can deliver. And it's something that has been observed during our public hearing process for the RM5 zoning is that the larger the buildings we put up, the more the trades and materials come from elsewhere. And local jobs and local purchasing are less favored with larger buildings. And we can see this on the signs as we go by the drive by the larger buildings. So this is something that the developers pointed out and telling us we should be mindful of this as we steer away from single family homes. Well, single family homes is the bread and butter of the local building supply outlets and the local trades and contractors. So the construction jobs and local purchasing, however we manage it, it needs to be, we need to keep a view on it and make and make even make a plan for it with the developer. Finally, the RM5 zoning was did not have the consensus of council. It was a one vote majority, and I think that we should take away the fact that this development is going to be the pattern and set. It's going to be important for future hillside developments. And I'd just like to emphasize that, given that the developer had a lot to say and the community had a lot to say on this, and council members did, is that we prioritize dialogue and receiving input from experience, and we're dealing here with an experienced developer with a number of interesting observations that came forward in the past. So I hope and trust that staff and the process can keep in mind a good dialogue with the developer and be ready to receive that experience and information that comes from industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counsel, further thoughts or comments at this point? I was like Peddingdale.
Yeah, a few things I noted, and I think much of it aligns with what we spoke to in our last discussion. But, you know, I would take a different perspective than my colleague. I am hoping to see some sort of, at the very least, as a thought experiment, some analysis of the types of housing and the sort of people, you know, what kind of jobs will they need? Is it affordable to live in those sorts of houses? And to and and where's our transit going with the, you know, thought of avoiding providing a bunch of housing for people who have to commit commute to the opposite side of Squamish to find work? And so as many as people as possible can can walk to work ideally, and I think we do need to put some thought into that. Somewhat related to that, I think at some point, there should be some discussion about who this community is for. And even if we sort of say, well, this is meant to be a community for everyone, you know, a natural question would be, well, then, how do we ensure that people with the most affluence and privilege don't take up all the housing, even though theoretically anyone could live there? And so just putting some thought to some of these things as as we consider the design, I think is important. I did have a note that I think some discussion with Squamish Nation and, you know, appropriate naming of places and and consideration for this development is important. I am looking at the Community Climate Action Plan as a sort of a a critical hard target that we have to meet to survive. And so, you know, an understanding of how we hit those community reductions in the light of a whole bunch of new people living here, some analysis and rationalization of that, I think I would like to see. I'm hoping the proponent, they say they've been working with Fortis, that they will have better luck than us about getting pipeline risk analysis. I am still very hesitant if that goes through to put a lot of density close to that pipeline. All the information I have been able to find suggests the risk is quite high to me. And so I'm hoping that someone can provide some analysis of that so we can make good sort of quantitative risk assessment decisions based on that. Glad to hear that the timeline is the proponents and not ours. And I and I think, you know, we don't want to drag our feet on this, but I am nervous about committing to a a general timeline. I want to make sure that we're making good decisions with the right information, and and I think that's been well addressed in this discussion. And just appreciate the idea and staff's response, the more we can do to keep the engagement flexible. I think what's important is the outcome, that we have a good understanding of what the neighborhood and area wants and and how we get there is is a little less important. And so yeah, those are the things that I think are important in this and appreciate the report.
Thank you, Counselor Peddingdale. Any further comments, counsel? Seeing none at this time, there is a motion to receive the staff report moved by Counselor Race, taken in by Mayor Elliott. Further comments? I'll call a question, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, staff.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, we'll take a short break before we jump into the next one. Let's come back at five after four. Just give us a chance to stretch our legs a bit before we jump into the Plaza at Junction Park. Thank you. All right, welcome back, counsel. We are in committee, we are in committee of the whole, and on item seven four of our agenda, the Plaza at Junction Park Development Overview, Development Permit Number 521. Go pass it over to Ms. Hope, who will be giving us a presentation before our discussion.
Thanks very much, Mayor and Counsel. Let's see if I can turn it on my screen.
We can see that now. Thank you. Go ahead.
Awesome. So my name's Asia Philp, planner with the Community Planning and Infrastructure Department, and today I'm presenting an overview of the Plaza at Junction Park proposal, which is currently at the development permit stage in the process. The objective for today is to present an overview and brief history of the Plaza at Junction Park development prior to bringing the DP forwards for formal council consideration. Following the presentation, we'll answer your questions and receive feedback on the form and character of the development as well as on the Main Street Plaza design. Our manager of municipal engineering, Laura Prinsic, is also on the video line to answer any engineering related questions. In factually, the site is comprised of an entire downtown block. It's located between Cleveland Avenue and Loggers Lane and Main Street to the north and Vancouver Street to the south. The block is zoned CD37. Junction Park and UCM Pavilion are just to the north of the site. Undeveloped properties are located to the east and south, with the Squamish Yacht Club and the Manclam Blind Channel located beyond these. The block to the west hosts the How Sound Inn and Brew Pub, existing residential development Studio SQ, and the main, which is a newly constructed mixed use residential development. The Plaza at Junction Park site was the former location of the PacWest Systems Supply Limited, and it was first rezoned in 2007 from the previous industrial use to a mixed commercial residential use. A development permit at that time was canceled, and development did not proceed on the site. Then in 2017, another rezoning application was made, keeping this mix of uses, but requesting additional density beyond the prior 2007 proposal. There is the rezoning took place between 2017 and 2018. It included three community development committee meetings, two advisory design panel meetings, and one public information meeting prior to going through the formal bylaw reading process. The overall building envelope, including height, massing, and sighting of the buildings, were set through this rezoning process and addressed views, shading, and impacts to the public realm. The current development permit 521 application was received in 2019 and has also been to three advisory design panel meetings to review the buildings as well as the Main Street Plaza. Through the latest rezoning process in 2017 and 2018, a land development agreement was negotiated, which secured the proponents' community amenity contribution. The CAC included 12% affordable rental, 8% market rental, onsite public art, two car share spaces, two public plazas, a mid-block plaza, as well as the Main Street Plaza, a 500,000 cash contribution to the district's community amenity provision fund, 25% of the total gross floor area of the development dedicated as employment space, and 10% of the residential units built to UBC Building Code Adaptive Housing Standards. The bird's eye view of the Plaza at Junction Park proposal is shown here. There are three main building masses across the block. The north building is comprised of a four story office attached to a six story mixed use building that has commercial and parking at grade, a parcade on the second story, and then four stories of residential above. The south building is an eight story mixed use building with, again, commercial and parking at grade, a parcade on the second story, and now six stories of residential apartment units above. Commercial uses front Cleveland, Main, and Vancouver Street, with the commercial uses wrapping around the mid-block plaza and also fronting at key locations along Loggers Lane. The first story of the office building at the north end of the block is also commercial, helping to activate the Main Street Plaza. Fifty-four condo units, 24 affordable rental units, and 16 market rental units are located in the north building. 107 condo units are located in the south building. Both buildings have second level patios as well as a rooftop deck as their communal open spaces, as well as indoor amenity spaces for residents to socialize and recreate. Public art is provided on the north building across the second story Loggers Lane frontage. The installation is a First Nations design of a two-headed serpent, Synol K., created by artist James Harry. Pedestrian connectivity is provided via sidewalks along all four street frontages, with a mid-block crosswalk located halfway along Cleveland Avenue and a mid-block plaza space that separates the two buildings, providing a through connection from Cleveland to Loggers. Vehicle access is off of Loggers Lane with two access driveways provided for each parcade. Two loading spaces are provided off Loggers Lane, as well as two public car share parking spaces. There's 256 parking spaces provided onsite, and 41 commercial spaces are Forty-one commercial spaces are proposed for parking buyout. That's the cash and blue option. No parking variance is requested. Another view closer to street level highlights the very character of the buildings across the block. The north and south buildings are relatable to each other. They're kind of like a sibling relationship, developed using similar cladding and screening treatments. The four-story office component is articulated as being independent from the rest of the north building and has a swooping curved roof and ample windows. The overall design of the building integrates with the new development across Cleveland, the main, with a west coast modern type of aesthetic. The site plan below the rendering shows the commercial areas at street level. These are the blue areas on the site plan. The storefronts are divided into typical retail base, maintaining the historic storefront scale and rhythm along Cleveland Avenue. There's three different storefront types that create variety across the length of the buildings. And the designer has used signage, materials, fenestration, and lighting, all designed to create an appealing streetscape. The commercial units are designed to open and spill out onto the street, particularly around the three plaza spaces at the Vancouver intersection, mid-block, and into the Main Street Plaza. So I'll focus now on the Main Street Plaza design, which is shown in plan view here with the outline of the UCM Pavilion shown on the right of your screen and the edge of the four-story office building showing on the left side. Cleveland Avenue runs across the top of the screen and Loggers Lane across the bottom. The plaza is intended to serve multiple functions as a pedestrian and public gathering space and an active transportation pathway, while also allowing vehicle traffic to pass through. So this concept is based on the Dutch Living Street idea called a woonerf, where a space is shared between all modes of transportation, including pedestrian, bikes, and cars, and features significant traffic calming, with vehicles restricted to very low speeds. So think walking or a biking pace for the cars. The space is intended to function as a public space where people can spend time socializing and hanging out. And the space is also designed to accommodate public events, providing a large, versatile, open space. The transportation and vehicle travel space can also easily be closed through the placement of barriers at either end, so that we can make the space even larger to accommodate big events. It's also a flexible design that accommodates gatherings and has space for food trucks, vendors, or other market-type uses. There's seating and landscaping islands along the south side of the space that are used to demarcate the southern edge of the vehicle lane and transition from the commercial patio seating areas that are adjacent to the office building. The northwest area of the plaza features steps up to a wooden deck that connect into the existing UCM Pavilion. The steps can also double as seating, and the deck can be used as a raised performance space, which would activate the southern aspect of the pavilion. The travel lane is seven meters wide, and it allows vehicles and bicycles to pass through the plaza space connecting Cleveland Avenue to Loggers Lane. The lane transitions from the road grade up to the sidewalk grade at the intersections, and then it stays at the sidewalk grade flush with the rest of the plaza's face, and allowing the plaza to function on one level with no curbs or barriers. Additional design measures include the application of different colors and textures of pavement treatment to demarcate the vehicle lane space. Touching briefly on public engagement, as part of the rezoning process, a public information meeting was held in April of 2018 with approximately 20 people attending. We received 30 public comments throughout the rezoning process, and five people spoke, all in support of the proposal at the public hearing in June of 2018. And since that time, only one public comment has been received as part of the development permit application. And as a result, no public information meeting has been held. So to wrap up the presentation and transition to discussion with committee, the formal recommendations are that Council receive the April 13th report from Community Planning on the forthcoming Plaza at Junction Park Development Permit for information, and that Council provide feedback regarding the Main Street Plaza design located adjacent to Development Permit Number 521 within the district's Main Street Road Right-of-Way. Thanks for your time, and I'll pass it back to the committee chair now.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Philp. I have Counselor Race and then Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. Two questions. One is with respect to the plaza. And and your picture was a little bit different than the picture we have in these these booklets, showing the gray lines going across, which I think is sort of a figurative schematic of a of a rail yard or something like that. And my question is, what are those gray lines made of? Are they painted on, or are they actually a different form of paving?
Yeah, through the chair. So that design is an older design that was updated. And Attachment Three is the most up-to-date landscaping plan in the package. And the the concrete design has changed a little bit between the two designs. But overall, it is, the different colors are dyed concrete. So one is a light concrete and the other's a dyed darker concrete, similar to what you see in the updated streetscapes, kind of the ones that are surrounding the main, are a good example. So you get that two-tone difference of concrete, and then they're score cut.
But not painted. Now, second question is, why are we allowing cars on that street? Is there a need for cars?
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly, and then I'd invite Laura Prinsic to add in if I missed anything. So certainly, we did have that discussion with Council through the rezoning, but no direction was given at that time to close the road. And the concept here is really that it's that woonerf shared-street design, which lets us allow for vehicles, traffic to pass through the plaza, providing that connectivity, while still allowing it to be a public space. And so that's something that we're excited to pilot in this area. There's a few more rationale around the actual traffic. And let's make here that I'll let Laura Prinsic jump in to speak to, to see her on the line.
Good afternoon. For the chair. Yeah, the things that we we thought about this a lot because it was important to, we wanted to come up with something that was really gonna work for this site. I know we were excited about the idea of having, of closing this porch mystery off to traffic. But then when we reflected on the fact that there's a lot of high-density developments now that are along Main Street. So there's now the main, there's the artisan building, there's the Soleil, Aqua, Sky, all that area. The majority of those residents access their homes by using Loggers Lane, which is actually, we consider a positive thing, because we don't want that through traffic using Cleveland or or even necessarily using second and third at this time, because those streets are sort of still under development. So that, and it's also the preferred route for emergency vehicles to access those sites as well. We do think that, I mean, the intent is that during special events, this plaza would be closed. It has the the option to put bollards in to close it off to traffic, and that's exactly what we would do during those times. And then the other thought is that we don't actually see this because there's only activation on one side, on the south side of the plaza. So there's going to be that commercial area, which will likely have a cafe or coffee shop or something going on on that side. It'll, it's it's only activated on the one side, which means it probably won't actually be that busy most of the time and can certainly handle slow-moving vehicular traffic through it without any difficulty.
So if I can just follow up. So what you're suggesting is that there's going to be a lot of vehicles using it because it accesses all of the density along Main Street, and yet we expect it to be very slow-moving?
It's a very short block between Loggers and Cleveland. It it's really, it's actually would be difficult to get much speed up between Loggers and Cleveland. Like, it's it's only a few meters, like a 30 or it's only 35.
It's a half-block, I know.
So, and there's and there's stop conditions on either end. It, I mean, we've seen lots of examples in much bigger and higher-density communities than ours, where plazas have been created, and they actually don't get used very much because they just aren't activated enough on enough sides. And, yeah, so at this time, it doesn't seem like the right move. We we have the opportunity to potentially close it down in the future to traffic, but it's much harder to go the other direction. So right now, it seems like this is the right move for downtown Squamish up today.
Thanks, Chair.
I have Mayor Elliott and then Counselor Anderson. And Counselor Crengeal.
Thank you. The the buildings are beautiful, and it's so interesting to see how a Step Four multi-family building is is going to need to be constructed. So I'm really pleased with the way that this has turned out. But my concern is the plaza. And I I found it really interesting that staff would point to no formal council motion to close the street. And it's because Council directed closing the street to create a plaza, which doesn't include cars. So I don't think anyone was thinking of a one-earf. They were thinking of a plaza for people. So when we provided that direction, it's my recollection that it didn't include cars. Therefore, we didn't need a motion because it was for people. So a plaza is a public square. And, you know, if you look for a definition of plaza, it doesn't include cars. So when we were all talking plaza in council meetings, it was because it didn't include cars. So so to say there was no motion, I think is not accurate. It was because none of us felt that there needed to be a motion because we were talking about a plaza. Staff didn't put on the table that that we could have cars in it. We were talking about closing that road end to have a plaza. So so I just, I I'm taken aback by that sentence in in the report because I don't think it accurately portrays the the conversation that was had a few years ago. So if if I am using Loggers Lane to access my home, then why would I tolerate this really slow dodging pedestrian and bikes access to my home? Why wouldn't I just switch my travel pattern to Second Avenue? If the logic is, is that they, everyone's using Loggers Lane now, and then they cut across Main. If if I slow everyone down with this and potentially close it off sometimes, then make it inconvenient. Isn't that going to force a pattern change?
Can I address that? Yeah, um, no, I totally see your point. And it could be the end, the result of creating this plaza could be that we end up seeing traffic divert, like to use other options, for sure. That's actually a little bit of an unknown. And I do, I mean, I want to say respectfully that it it could very well be that the initial assumption was that this was going to be closed to traffic. And so during the design process and during our reflection, like as you're aware, we're also, we are constantly looking at downtown traffic patterns and how to and how to future-proof and think about how things are going to work over the next 10 and 20 years in downtown in terms of tra- traffic and vehicle access. And at this time, this does not seem like the best place to have a road closure. I I think there are other options nearby that have even better potential than this one does. And that that's that's where the process has taken us.
So why couldn't we just open it to emergency vehicles and versus opening it to traffic?
So we just, we, through the chair, we discussed that option as well. And it's quite, unless you have some kind of automated bollard system that they 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 have a little button to press in the in the fire truck kind of technology, it's it's not easy to police that or to make that work. Unless we want to move to that kind of technology, which would be sort of expensive and need to be maintained and whatnot. We did look at that, and it and it doesn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense as long as this this, the road is designed appropriately, that it keeps traffic really slow and prioritizes pedestrians and cyclists, which is what we've attempted to create.
And why are we making the assumption that the north side isn't going to be animated? There's a park there, there's now benches there, there's now a stage there. There's actually public realm there that doesn't exist now. So on on market days, you know, during a busy summer, why, why are we assuming that that north side of the plaza won't be active?
Through the chair, yeah. So as I said earlier, the so the point is that we probably will have that street closed on festival weekends, on farmer's market mornings, on all those sorts of times. But it probably won't be busy during the weekdays, at least busy enough to warrant having to completely shut it to traffic.
Ms. Philp, did you have something you wanted to add to that? You're on mute. Ms. Philp, we can't hear you here on mute.
Thanks. Apologies. Yeah, I just wanted to echo Laura's thoughts that, you know, that space really is quite large. And even though we are putting all of these amenities in, it's really the people and the events that drive that use. And so, yeah, for kind of just an average day with nothing pre-programmed, it's likely we wouldn't see that level of activation that might warrant shutting the whole thing down to vehicle traffic.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott, you have further question at this time?
We are being asked to make a decision about a plaza that was intended to be not open to vehicles despite what the staff report says. And clearly, staff have made decisions over time that they're now recommending to Council that it is open to vehicles. But we have no idea when, Ms. Prinsic, you say there's other better streets that are available to close, what that would look like or how that fits in. So you're asking us to make it, to walk back from a direction on this plaza in the future hopes that there's some other thing that will happen in the future. So how are we supposed to reconcile that? When will we see those plans?
Go ahead, Ms. Philp.
Yeah, through the chair. So specifically, we we have, we don't have an overview map or a design concept right now, but staff are actively working on a active transportation design for Victoria Street within that same between Cleveland and Loggers Lane block that would connect to the waterfront landing pedestrian bridge that's going in and and provide kind of that funnel for traffic from Valley Cliff and Waterfront Landing coming into downtown. And so there, we're definitely working on other areas for active transportation and for traffic calming. So I think the vision is to see these other opportunities play out over time. And we didn't want to hamstring ourselves by creating an inflexible design that we couldn't really back away from once it's in place without spending a significant amount of capital, time, and energy trying to backtrack. So I think staff kept that in mind, that we wanted the space to be flexible for now and and to design it to be easily closed, potentially permanently in the future, but not in the near term.
Thank you.
I have Counselor Anderson, then Penningill and Herford.
Thank you. I'd like to uh, have some clarification on the public art budget and what is encompassed within that component of the project. Um, hundred and seven thousand two hundred. And I take it this, does this include more than the Sino-Kai uh, double-headed serpent design, but also uh, the railroad tracks design inlay? And the interpretive panels that are proposed for the OCM Pavilion or behind the old CM Pavilion Park in the District Park? If you could clarify what is encompassed in that public art budget?
Yeah, through the chair, so that public art budget is only for the Sino-K installation on Loggers Lane. And not for any of the interpretive panels or other public art that might go into the Main Street Plaza. It's just for the installation on the north building.
And is the, is, I was a little bit confused by your response to Counselor Race's uh, question on the status of that inlay. Uh, where does it stand now? I understand you're referring to two different versions of the landscape plan.
Yeah, so the current version is that attachment three package that features kind of the the more rectangular um, block design. And it's still a work in progress um, between staff and the applicant to refine that. The um, original uh, more narrow striping to reflect kind of that railroad type design. It was thought that that would be overly complicated. So from Public Works Engineering and and Planning Staff's perspective, the maintenance of that in the future might be really complicated. And that kind of narrow banding could potentially create a lot um, more opportunity for cracks and for other maintenance related issues. So we'd like to see something a bit more varied and a bit more colorful, but not as complicated as what the applicant originally proposed in that railroad design.
Um, also, just follow up on the same general topic of the public art budget. Now, I have been involved in quite a number of large-scale public art installations. I've done this over twenty-five years. And there is a great deal of di- difference, different approaches that can be taken in collaboration with the developer. Specifically with the Sino-K design, we have a 3D design. We have materials fabrication, I believe it's a perforated metal, perforated aluminum or or what it may be. And but there is, there can be significant uh, involvement of developer to the benefit of the of of delivering more for the, for your money, if you like. Because the developer is involving and having all kinds of materials, ordering materials. If you leave it all to the, to the artist uh, in a project of that scale, you will inevitably have a very high, much higher budget. This is really a rule of thumb. Um, so I'm concerned about the public art uh, component. Um, and so this is why I'm asking that question about the approach taken. Uh, we have a new public art policy and I think that we should be very interested to uh, evaluate this project in particular. In the context of that policy and in the evolution of how we address public art and private development projects. Uh, if you may be able to shed any further light on the uh, on that installation.
Through the chair, so this is an in-kind installation. The developers required to provide this art installation. They went through a full um, public art selection process that involved at the time, members of the pub, of the district's public art select committee. Um, to do the artist's selection. But because it's in-kind, I believe that they probably will use some of those advantages that you outlined in that the developers. Very much responsible for the provision of this. And the value is the amount of security that the district is going to hold to ensure that this uh, public art piece is installed. So it's just the security, but it's not necessarily the exact budget that's being spent on the project from the developer's perspective.
Thank you. Finally, I'm still lacking uh, um, um, understanding of where the interpretive panels fit in. The landscape architects' work, um, which included both the track inlay and the interpretive panels or some type of interpretive projects. Can you elucidate where that fits in in the budget or otherwise? Uh, how does that fit into the delivery?
Yeah, so the developer is also responsible for delivering on all aspects of the construction and installation of the Main Street Plaza. And so we'll, we're still hammering through all of the details, which would include the installation of the interpretive panels and the content therein. But staff is working with the developer on that and then it's the developer's responsibility to provide that.
Thank you, Chair. I'll come back with some comments on this same theme a bit later. Thank you.
Okay, and I just, um, Counselor Anderson, I'll ask us at the future speakers as well. Staff, staff are specifically seeking feedback on the Main Street Plaza design, so I'm curious if you have any thoughts or comments on.
I I'm I'm happy to deliver my comments and suggestions at this time.
Uh. Uh, sure, go ahead.
On that very thing. Well, first of all, we have in the page one of the project presentation, "Squamish is recognized worldwide for its culture." And that's a quote from district policy. And we have DPA guideline, Form in Character thirty-six point four. Development should strive to authentically integrate human histories. Well, the history of this site is overwhelmingly railway-related. And we have hundreds of families tied to the history of this site as a railway site. We have twenty steam locomotives owned by the railway over many decades that are photographed at this site. The the history associated with railway at Main Street Plaza is very deep. Ideally, we would have a neighborhood or a site context statement available for a public art committee or heritage installation projects. But the the landscape architect, I'm aware, have taken the initiative to reach out to the West Coast Railway Association. And there are two elements in the design proposed, the inlaid tracks, which we've discussed, and also the interpretive panels. But for honoring the heritage of this site and developing its appeal and interest for plaza visitors, which should be our goals, I suggest we should do more. The panels as proposed are insufficient opportunity for storytelling. They are also problematic with respect to location and accessibility, and I'm referring to wheelchair access. I question also, or I I will, I will emphasize that the the, an installation like that, like these interpretive panels and there's other examples around town, they have to be durable. And I previously pointed this out in discussion with planning staff on streetscape standards that maybe public art installations and other similar institutions should. Have some kind of standard with respect to accessibility and durability. We have to have metal printing, not not paper and plexiglass. But the story, storytelling delivery can be in diverse formats and that suggests that we have a lot of bare concrete uh, in this plaza. And that's opportunity for, for example, long beveled panels on the ground, wheelchair accessible, lot of more surface to use to tell that story of twenty steam locomotives. We also have in that bare, a lot of that concrete, there's opportunity for very economical uh, value-added paving, if you like. Seated exposed aggregate paving is an idea and then you do this as you lay down the concrete, but it's very inexpensive. That can enhance and aliven this uh, the 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 plaza. But um, I do not consider that this development meets the guideline on thirty-six point four with respect to human histories. Given the enormous railway history at this site, we need to address that. That's what I suggest. And the West Coast Railway Association are ready to step forward. And we have policies and guidelines elsewhere in the OCP and the Arts and Cultural Heritage Strategy, which point in that direction. I just hope that we can take advantage of that. And um, I I think that the, the panels as proposed in the corner of the park is just simply inefficient, insufficient to tell that story. I have other comments on the related topics. Um, the policies that are outlined, several from OCP. Heritage is missing, twenty-seven point nine and ten should also be cited. There are also action items, short-term in the Arts, Cultural and Heritage Strategy, which could be given attention. And they include. Excuse me. Uh, there's one point four, celebrating heritage, four point two, promotion of heritage. These are short-term action items in the Arts and Cultural Heritage Strategy with district responsibilities. Um. With respect to uh, the transportation plan and and that's already been discussed in conversation with between engineering and Mayor Elliott. I actually think that the present plan only makes sense and that this will evolve. We have opportunity to evaluate later. But I also think in the discussion in the report on downtown transportation planning, we have to factor in parking facilities and link up those discussions. Um. And finally, I'm concerned about the issue of the lack of the north end covered space. This is brought up in the report, it's referred to in the DPA guidelines discussion. But is that north end of the plaza, north end of the building there, it's protected from wind? And this is a real opportunity. And I wonder what the opportunity may be to extend covered space there. Uh, we have a couple of rows of trees, I take it. I'm not sure, the de- the renderings have different depictions of it. But are there opportunities to extend the covered space for patio seating, for example, at the north end of that building? I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Uh, I have Counselor Penningill, Herford, French, and then myself on the list. Uh, so still taking questions. Counselor Race, I'll put you on the list as well. Uh, for comment, got it. Uh, and then also, again, just trying to get some general sense and feedback on the Main Street Plaza design and accessibility to cars at this point. Uh, in your question and comment sections. Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. Start with a question. I'm just wondering, um, policy thirty-six eighteen D around cool roofs and pavements. Uh, made of highly reflective and emissive materials. And and I noticed there's a lot of pavement or sidewalk in that plaza. Um, we did have a, I think it was a DPA where we accepted it because there is metallic uh, paint on the roof and metal was reflective. But I I find, you know, metallic paint cars get really super hot and and so I'm just wondering. Um. Do we go beyond the guideline or expectations? Like, is there a sort of an objective? We expect a reflective factor? Is there some sort of standard or or how are we deciding that this is good enough in terms of a a cool space, cool pavement, cool roofs?
Go ahead, Miss Hope.
Through the chair, the architects indicated that they are going to do a cool roof design, but we don't have any further detail on that. So that's something that I can endeavor to get from the architect and bring forward when we bring this for formal consideration, for sure.
Okay, and then in the the cement or pavement in the plaza, like i- is there a specific standard or because it's sort of not black, that's good enough? Or or how do we assess sort of our expectations there?
Through the chair, I I'm not the, it's not in my wheelhouse to comment on the the concrete for the plaza spaces. It is a lighter color, um, but uh, yeah, perhaps Jonas or Laura can speak to this better.
Go ahead, Mr. Valancas.
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, so I just wanted to remind that the actual plaza design is not a subject to the Development Permitary Guidelines. Because it's not, it's in our, uh, in on our property, on our streetscape. Um, so the, the analysis table, uh, at the end of the report is only applicable to the building.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Um, then I guess on the plaza itself, I mean, I I think from some of the emails and correspondence I've been seeing, it's it's a really hard sell to. Uh, for me to accept uh, vehicles through there. I I would be comfortable, you know, without automatic bowlers or whatever, to say emergency traffic only and expect that if you're caught driving through there, you're going to get a huge fine if you're not in an emergency vehicle. Um, the the one concern, though, I have in that when I look at this design and and having been a a heavy user of the the OCM Pavilion. Um, even for small events and thinking too with some of the Arts Council changes and Amped in the Park and that sort of thing. Um, you spend uh, an hour or two with a couple trucks or vans parked right up to the back, they have to back in. Um, they're loading and unloading gear and restricting access to that gear for security reasons while you move around the front is important. Uh, and then the same after the event and and currently, because the back of of OCM is not used, that's not really an issue. And you can have all that activity around the front and it and it works out great. But it looks like in this plan, we've got activity around three hundred sixty degrees sort of throughout the duration of the event. And I am worried about vehicles backing in and out with kids and and sort of activity in the plaza. Um, and so if we don't do that, then how do you get the sound equipment, the lighting equipment, whatever stuff you need, which just doesn't exist in the Pavilion? So I'm I'm wondering if we've sort of given enough thought to the functionality of the Pavilion and how we expect it to be used. Uh, in this design and how it will work with a a busy event and those unloading and unloading sort of activities.
Go ahead, Miss Hope.
Yeah, so we have engaged with the various Pavilion domain stakeholders. So the people that put on Amped in the Park and the Squamish Arts Council members and some of the Beer Fest hosts. Um, they have reviewed these plans. And yes, it might be slightly more complicated for them, but we have kept the design so that you can still load equipment. From that south edge of the plaza. Um, as well as it might be easier because there's actually more ramping now to get up onto the plaza. Um, instead of the steps um, that are currently there. And then we've added a second access on the east side of the Pavilion directly off of Loggers Lane. With the ramp up to the Pavilion stage from that east side. And so we really have worked closely with the the plaza, the Pavilion users to try to address their needs as to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. I I guess just from my experience, though, it would seem to me. Um, even though that access may be provided, the the reality is you'll have a couple vehicles or trucks backed up into that space for a couple hours during an event. And so how usable will that space be around whatever side the vehicles are at during a busy event? Like, there's going to be some, some side of that OCM is going to be unavailable to people, it seems, for a couple of hours. And and maybe that's okay and that's just the way it is, but um. It it just seems a little bit different, like our our concept seems to be that this is active all four sides all the time. And and I think the reality may need to be a little bit different than that.
Thank you for the feedback. Anything further, Counselor Penningill? Uh, Counselor Herford, French, myself, and then Counselor Race.
Thank you. Um. I was surprised to see the vehicle access, um, proposed vehicle access through that uh, that um, that portion of the of the site. I think um. The rationale provided to me um. Sort of indicates a larger demand than that traffic calmed uh, through Fairwoods um, would meet in in my mind. So I find the action and the rationale to be just um, kind of dis- disconnected to me. Um. I think that having uh, it possible for vehicles to access uh, has value. I'm thinking um, emergency access, uh, loading in and out like uh, Counselor Penningill mentioned, maybe even deliveries. Uh, I'm open to a loading space for the um, the build, the the tenants where that's um, could be beneficial and and that sort of uh, very occasional uh, vehicle traffic. Almost windows-down, four-way flashers-on uh, s- style um, uh, for authorized vehicles, but um. But having it open um, uh, and thus sort of cars being prioritized uh, in my mind higher than uh, than I uh, I anticipated. Isn't something that I'm um, excited about seeing in this, in this project. Um. The, the north end of the building, I like that that point of um, of it's, it's sheltered and I'm I'm curious about extending it. Or how far the overhangs can be, can be pushed to create some covered space on the north end of that, of that building. And if this, if where it is, is as far as uh, makes, makes sense, um, or with setbacks or whatever the constraints are, then maybe that's, that's fine. But I'd like that to make sure that we maximize that, to make sure the functionality of the uh, of that outside space is uh. Um. Adjacent to um, is uh. Adjacent to is as functional as possible. Yeah. Besides that, I, I think the buildings themselves are, look great. And I'm happy with, with those, those pieces. But that's where I am at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, Councillor Harper, Councillor French.
Thanks, Chair. And at this point, I don't have any questions, just comments. And just starting off with the public art that Councillor Anderson has focused in on. I was chairing our Public Art Committee while the First Nations design was being formalized. And I thought it was a great process. It was well thought out and happy to see what has come to us. As far as design for that goes. And I also agree that more covered space at the north end of this subject site would be appropriate. The, the design already offers some undercover at the north end. And I agree, I think there could be more. It rains here a bit and it also gets real windy. So it helps with those two elements. And I support this plaza design. I actually was a little surprised. Because I too was thinking this wasn't going to incorporate vehicles. And I feel that this design will signal to anybody in a vehicle just exactly what this space is. And primarily a place for pedestrians, cyclists, skateboarders, inline skaters. And I think that staff has, has presented a great design here that is workable. And I like that we've got the flexibility to potentially completely close it off in the future. If in the future, we decide that that's going to serve us better as a completely closed off and pedestrian-only space. That's all I got at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor French. I do have a few questions, also mostly about covered space. But with respect to the DP guidelines and the buildings themselves. I'm curious about the orientation of the rooftop public amenity outdoor space and its functionality. So appreciate that there's roofs, but there. There angle that lets the predominant wind direction and there's no wind covering or separation. And so I'm just curious if staff, it does say in the DP area guidelines. Thirty-six point one four D that it doesn't quite meet the guidelines of outdoor amenity space should include areas with overhead weather protection. From rain and wind. And so I'm just curious if staff can speak a little bit more to that. And what we would anticipate in terms of actual weather coverage for those outdoor spaces.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith. Through the chair, I mean, there's several spaces. There's the second story spaces and then the rooftop spaces. And in particular, what I had called out was in the north building, which is the one containing the rental units. There was no covered outdoor space. Although I think as Councillor Anderson pointed out, there is some weather protection provided by, by the building. But for the south building, yeah, that it's always that trade-off to get that southern exposure. But then you're also fully exposed to the wind. So it's something that I could definitely bring back to the architect and the design team. To see if they have a creative solution to perhaps address not only the rain covering, which they are because they have, they have the cover. But they don't have the wind blockage.
Yeah, often rain doesn't come from straight up and down in this town. It comes sideways. And then I guess in terms of the plaza, I'm, I'm curious if we've given some thought of how we would have designed it? If cars were not part of the priority. And so I hear from staff that there is some rationale for still enabling vehicles to move through this space. But at the same time, that is being rationalized because there may not be a huge amount of demand for the plaza. But I wonder if we were not designing for vehicles, if we would be designing the plaza differently. And I'm thinking like more playground space or something that would actually activate the area seven days of the week. As opposed to just simply on weekends and events.
Through the chair, we haven't necessarily gone about that visioning exercise of what the plaza would look like if it was completely closed to vehicles. We were definitely on the trajectory of a shared space design. But certainly in the future, if we did decide to close that road, then there's lots of creative ideas. That other communities have done. Movable furniture is one of the first things that comes to mind. There's lots of more kind of cheap and cheerful opportunities for us to utilize that converted road space.
Okay. And then last on the Main Street Plaza, my question is, have we considered getting the, the deck space that they're proposing to add? Kind of to the pavilion covered? Is that right now in all the images, it looks like that is an uncovered space? And so was that part of the discussion?
Yeah, through the chair. So that was part of the discussion that staff were hoping to see in the design. That hasn't come to fruition. The developer hasn't provided that deck coverage. So it's certainly something that we can bring back to the proponent and request again that that be provided. And I've heard from other councillors today that a desire to see some more covered space within that general plaza area.
And so just a general comment from me in terms of the plaza itself. I'm on the fence about whether we, we design this to allow vehicles in the short term with the longer-term ambition of closing it off. But I think that the rationale for me isn't there to enable that vehicle access in the short term. When that is still our long-term goal. In the short term, there are other ways around this particular neighborhood. And I think having outdoor usable programmable space. As, as the intention of this plaza was what was previously envisioned. And I think that we fall short of that if we prioritize some of that area for vehicle transfer, or for vehicle through traffic. We just leave that, leave ourselves short on the other side in terms of how we probably otherwise would have programmed this space. So that's where I'm sitting on that particular point at this time. I have Councillor Race and then Councillor Penningill and then Mayor Elliott. So we're going to go around with other comments here to try and push. Onto a decision in some direction for staff purely on the Main Street Plaza component. Any other additional comments that you want to make?
So I can go ahead? Yeah, you just, you just went silent. So, so this is actually, when, when I look at the buildings. And as you gathered from the staff report, last term. We had quite extensive dialogue with the developer and architect during the rezoning process. And the project evolved in a number of ways that I thought were very favorable ultimately. And, and one of them was separating out instead of one long block, ending up with two, actually three blocks. And the desire there was so that we could sort of see through the development, if you like. It didn't completely block views. We were very conscious of views from potentially the main, which was proposed. But also the brew pub and sitting on the deck at the brew pub and trying to look at the chief and, and things like that. And so the solution of separating the two buildings, I thought, was, was a masterstroke on behalf of the developer and architect. And then the other discussion that came out of that was Main Street and closing Main Street. And I remember the committee, the whole meeting, and the word closed was used. And for me, closing a road is a technical process, which means you're absolutely closing the road. And converting it to something else. And sometimes building a building on it, sometimes doing park or something. So I'm left with the plaza with no cars, but I'll come to that in a second. As far as the buildings go, the only comments I had, excuse me, were with respect to, and Councillor Stoner raised this, is the wind effect. And I noticed that when you're looking at the, the schematics and renderings of the rooftop patios. That is actually one of the windiest spots in downtown Squamish. There's just nothing there protecting it. And so some of the diagrams, and I recognize these are just artist renderings. But some of them showed sort of like a picket fence with kind of a wrought iron fence, which would do nothing to stop the wind. And others seemed to show kind of a plexiglass similar to what you see in the Shrocko and some of the other buildings along Loggers Lane. But I think whatever you choose, you're going to have to do something to screen the wind. Or during the most pleasant times of the day, those will be really not pleasant. And so I think that is, if those outdoor spaces are going to be used in nice weather, in nice weather in Squamish in the summertime, it's windy. The second thing is I echo the comments on the covered space at the north end. We have generally in conversations at council and a number of different levels talked about covered space and more of it. For any variety of different potential activities. The third thing that occurred to me as somebody else was speaking, I think it was Councillor French, talking about skateboarding. Is maybe we wouldn't necessarily want to encourage that on a plaza. We might consider rough surfaces, which can discourage skateboarding and which are considerably hazards in some places. But the plaza for me is no cars. And I don't care if we don't go through the actual bylaw process of closing the road. But the idea that it is a through-street-to-development to me is just a non-starter. I understand we need to be able to get a fire truck in there. I understand that that would be a great place for food trucks. And I think you could do that actually, just in the pull-off of Cleveland and, and Loggers. To get it off the traveled roads and just sort of tucked in at the ends there without even going through the middle. But I think a system of bollards or something like that. And I don't think they have to be automatic. It seems to work pretty well in other places where it's just a chain and a lock at the bottom. And the first guy jumping off the fire truck unlocks them and off they go. So I think some system like that could be in place. I take the point that we might want to close other streets. I think that's a great idea. And I would be inclined to close Victoria as well. And I think really what we want to perhaps think about is the bigger scheme of things in the downtown. And maybe encourage traffic coming in on Cleveland Avenue. Who are ultimately headed for destination to the west of Cleveland Avenue. To use Pemberton and Second and Third and not have to cross the whole town from Loggers Lane. And so we might want to encourage people to do that. And the more roads we close between Cleveland and Loggers, I think the better will be. You know, it may be that that site is relatively inactive now. But we're about to start on construction of a park across the street on the other side. And Block forty-four on the other side, more or less directly between the water and this development. Is up for development sometime. We don't know exactly what's going to appear there. So there's going to be in the future much more pedestrian, potential pedestrian activity. So I think it's absolutely necessary. This discussion has actually highlighted two things for me. And I take the point that this meets all of the parking requirements and the variance. By having a significant cash contribution for spaces that aren't there. Which kind of raised the point in my mind that one of the other forms of traffic that might come through that mall is people driving around the block looking for parking spaces. So I think downtown parking is going to become a more acute issue. And I don't want to burden this development permit with that issue. But I think it's something that we as a council and staff cannot avoid. We are going to have to start dealing with some bigger solutions to parking. The second thing that's come out of these conversations for me is our ultimate access to the oceanfront. And right now, it seems to be Loggers Lane, which goes right by this place in the park. And will effectively bisect two parks. The opposing one in Waynuck Park. And how much traffic do we really want down Loggers Lane? Six thousand people are scheduled to live down there. Plus commercial and light industrial. And are they all going back and forth on Loggers Lane? Are they going to be able to use Third Avenue? Is it feasible to put a bridge across there? At one point, staff, and this is several years ago, had the idea that Cleveland Avenue would be the main access to Loggers Lane. I think we're going to have to wrestle with that as well and get that clear in our minds. It's not clear in my mind what the ultimate solution for that is. But it goes right by this development, goes right by the parks, right by this plaza. And it really will have a huge impact on the downtown area. So as I say, I don't want to burden this development permit application process with that issue. But certainly it highlights that that is still an issue. And so I think we're going to have to deal with that in the near term, not the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Race. Over to Councillor Penningill and Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, thank you. It's taken me a bit to orient myself in listening to the discussion in terms of OCM and how that fits in here. But listening to the discussion, I mean, it's not clear to me that this is even required for emergency access. And, you know, a couple hundred meters either way, you can get west. And it's a very narrow street, so I'd be surprised if that's required for emergency access. And maybe staff will come back and I'll be proven wrong. But my inclination would be to close that plaza to vehicles, full stop, including emergency vehicles. And have it, you know, figure out how to just activate it for people. I think looking at the diagram, loading from the east probably makes the most sense in terms of not interfering with people. But still providing a way to keep OCM active. I agree with my colleagues that attention to covered space here is really important. And, and I guess I would come back to the idea, if we are. Not using this for cars, I think that provides an opportunity for a lot less cement. And which I find unwelcoming, especially when it's hot. And so some more, more of a livable and inviting space, I think, becomes an opportunity. Just quickly, my colleague's comments about cars and parking and so on. I think that only continues to be a problem to the degree we continue to expect to all have cars. And I think if we are on the path of assuming we are moving away from that, a lot of what we're doing here makes kind of a lot of sense. And it's just managing that transition. And I know there's other perspectives, but for me, I, I think this, this makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Penningill. And Councillor, Mayor Elliott, French, and then Anderson.
Thank you. Appreciate council's comments on making sure there's sort of, we're considering on the rooftops, the, the wind and the rain. The space in the plaza, perhaps some recovered space makes sense. I think the public art is beautiful. I don't think we need to go much further around the railway heritage. I think it's a shame we lost some of those crosshatching. I think that was actually a beautiful way to acknowledge the railway history. But it's pre-colonial history is probably just as important. And so I'm trying to strike a balance between the two. But I understand the operational concerns around maintaining that over time. But more than just those new blocks would be lovely to see. I think that we should close this street with, with the bollards right from the beginning. And allow it to take on a life of its own, rather than keep it open to cars. And, and this development has been in process for a long time. So I'm not suggesting we go back to the drawing board and redesign it as a people-only plaza. I think there's things that we can add to it over time that will make sense. But also, it preserves in the future, if there is a compelling reason to reopen it to a bit of traffic. Then we still have that option. But I think if we don't close it from the beginning, which is what council intended. Then we don't allow it to figure itself out and how it wants to be activated and who wants to spend time there and how. So I still think those food trucks should be able to, be able to pull in there and access that. I think that'll be a really important addition and for people to set up stalls and do whatever they need to do around festival or events. That's great. But otherwise, it's, it's closed to traffic. And as the designs come forward for Victoria and, and there's a second crossing across Pemberton. And active transportation builds out on Third Avenue. And we figure out how everyone's going to access the waterfront or the, the oceanfront. or the the oceanfront. Then I then we can rethink this in the future, but I think we have to let it be a pedestrian only space and have kids running back and forth between the park and and whatever, without parents having to think about cars driving through here, no matter how slowly. So to me, I'd I'd like to see it come forward for to council starting as a closed space that has a plan for access for food trucks and and events and that sort of thing. Otherwise, I, you know, we need to get on with this. It's, I think, a great contribution to our community. There's affordable housing and market rental involved. So would like to see this move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I have councillor French and councillor Anderson.
Thanks, Chair. And just a few quick points to add to what I said originally. Like where councillor Anderson is headed with the railway theme with the the concrete design and that the look of the tracks not in the design at this point. I would like for us to find some way to reemphasize the railway history in that area. And councillor Pedding Gill's comment about permeable surfaces, I totally support more in the way of permeable surfaces in that Plaza area. It does look like a lot of concrete as the design exists at this point. And final thought, while I said earlier that I think that the design works with cars. If we ultimately do completely close it right from the very beginning, I I can support that as well. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I like the concept that staff have put forward on the whether this or on that this need not be closed at this time. I spent a lot of time in Netherlands. I'm familiar with the concept. I visit many places with these type thing and it works. I think we have sufficient flexibility in looking for the future and adaptability in the staff's proposal. And I'm persuaded by the engineering municipal engineers' comments in this regard. I'm going to repeat myself and also perhaps echo councillor Race on the issue of downtown parking strategy. I'm going to quote from the staff report that as the downtown population continues to grow and downtown traffic patterns evolve as part of transportation planning and further development. Well, that sentence clause needs to address parking facilities. It's inescapable. And I did attend the 2018 Public Information Meeting at the Adventure Centre concerning this development and the overwhelming theme was parking. And whether there is sufficient parking for residences and impacts on the neighborhood. It was the overwhelming theme at that meeting. And interestingly, it was the realtors that were there that just put forward that the demands on the part of the people who living in these spaces, we have to face reality. So but my main point here is that we need to be looking at downtown parking facilities and not keep pushing that away as part of our planning. Finally, with respect to heritage, we have a lot of policy and many stated intentions. And there's nothing in the way of First Nations designs and railway heritage and the history of the site being both celebrated here. James Harry's own family is represented in one of the steam locomotive photos and one of the best known photos. James's uncle is right in the front of the steam train. And I think that we need to make a plan. I'm going to quote again from the from the report from aka Architecture. It is envisioned that the Plaza could be an outdoor venue for temporary or permanent art installations. And I think that we that that also needs a plan. It needs a plan before you lay down the concrete. Where are these installations going to go? And they need to be durable. They need to be wheelchair accessible. And we need to do a better job at telling our story, a shared history. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I will try and summarize and then maybe staff can fill in any gaps that they heard. Specifically on the DP for number five twenty one. The primary feedback that I heard was specifically around exploring more covered spaces and ensuring better weather and wind protection of those outdoor shared spaces. And then specifically to the Main Street Plaza and Road Right Away. Also heard consensus on comments around covered space. That there is a mix of opinions, but a majority of of council favor having it closed to vehicles from the outset with some flexibility to open it at a later date if need be. And then some mixed comments around ongoing consideration of the railway heritage incorporating in that space. Did staff pick up on anything else or did I miss something? From general comments on the Main Street Plaza. Go ahead, Miss Phil.
The only thing I would add through the chair is the pre-colonial heritage is equally important to tell that shared story. So that would be the only other addition.
Great addition. Thank you. With that, council, we do have two motions to entertain. If anybody would like to move those. The first motion being that council received the April thirteen twenty twenty one report from community planning on the forthcoming Plaza Junction Park development for information. And that council provides the following feedback as we just summarized regarding the Main Street Plaza design located adjacent to the development permit area within the district's Main Street Right Away. Moved by councillor Race, seconded by councillor Herford. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you council for the discussion.
Thanks.
We have one more item on our open agenda. So if it's all right with council, we'll power through and we get that done. And then we'll take a short recess before we go back into the close. So the next item is UBCM strengthening communities grant. Mr. Pageley for a short discussion presentation before we consider the motion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Elliott, members of council. My name is Dan Pageley, the acting general manager of community services. I'm here this afternoon to seek council support to endorse the District of Squamish submitting a grant on behalf of Helping Hands regarding the community strengthening grant administered through UBCM. To address community concerns and improve the health and safety of unsheltered homeless, Under One Roof has approached the district to apply to UBCM Community Strengthening Grant on the behalf to build community capacity. The potential program delivery model that Under One Roof is proposing involves various community stakeholder groups. Staff agree, there's an opportunity to collaborate within various agencies to improve the safety and wellbeing for all community members, including those most vulnerable. The vision articulated by our colleagues at Under One Roof reads as such a vibrant and inclusive downtown Squamish neighborhood where everyone feels physically, culturally and emotionally safe and a sense of belonging. The UBCM Strengthening Communities Grant represents an upcoming opportunity to support this vision. Thus, we are seeking council's endorsement of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pageley. Council, any questions on this item? Go ahead councillor Anderson.
Mr. Pageley, I wonder if you may be able to briefly summarize how we monitor how large this clientele of persons are in the community that these programs would cater cater to. How can we can we monitor trends? Council will surely be interested. Do we gather numbers and maintain numbers on the clientele we're seeking to support here?
Through the chair, the councillor Anderson, working with the Under One Roof staff, it's built into the grant application to actually track the numbers that they are working with through the process, but they also have numbers of the folks that are currently working with under their roof. So they do have solid data to support the the process that we're speaking about. I just don't have those numbers in front of me.
Thank you.
Mayor Elliott?
Do we know the amount of funding that is being applied for?
Through the chair to Mayor Elliott, the grant, we're looking for $450,000. And that's the maximum amount for a community of our size.
Oh, I didn't realize we were maxing out. And also for my colleague through the chair, the homeless count started last week through Sea the Sky Community Services to capture updated data from the last one. Thank you, Mr. Pagey.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from council? Not seeing any. Is anybody willing to move the motion? Moved by councillor Pedding Gill, seconded by councillor Herford. Any comments? Go ahead councillor.
Yeah, want to thank Under One Roof for for bringing this forward and taking this on. It is a bit frustrating for me that communities have to rely on grants for this sort of funding. I I see what's being proposed is pretty fundamental work. I understand this is part of a pilot program, but the 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 things being contemplated just seem really fundamental to the community's success. And and my hope is that one of the results of COVID is that we do a lot better provincially and federally at funding these sorts of things adequately because there's a great need and just hands up and hats off to Under One Roof for the efforts they put into the sort of thing. And and actually to the community around that is supporting this project.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. I'm really pleased that we're collaborating with Squamish Helping Hands and Under One Roof to apply for this grant. I think reducing stigma and ensuring positive integration of supportive housing into our community is really vital. And you know, if we're successful, this funding gives us the opportunity to pilot a model that could be used elsewhere in the province and also builds on some of the the street teams that are already out there. So keeping my fingers crossed and hoping that we're successful.
Thank you. I am happy to support the motion. I'm also excited to see that we are collaborating with Squamish Helping Hands, Under One Roof on this. As I think back to the early stages of the development of Under One Roof, a lot of the conversation was about how we ensure that that this is a community for all and that there is effective integration in a sense of neighborhood with this facility in the downtown core. And so I think that this is a really interesting pilot to start to build those bridges and and start to create some leadership in the neighborhood, not necessarily just from the institutions and organizations that are commonly involved, but really reach out to the community and have neighbors interact with neighbors. So I'm fingers crossed that we are successful in getting this sort of grant and we can pilot that model and learn from it. And also a thanks to staff for being responsive to this and and willing to to shift and enable the application. If it is successful, I think it'll be a great opportunity. Not seeing any further comment. I'll call the question. Any opposed? Not seeing any motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Pageley. And then I will entertain a motion to close this council. Moved by councillor Herford, seconded by councillor Pedding Gill. Thank you. And council, you should have an updated link. No? Okay, so go back to the link that you had this morning. Robin will just open it up here. We'll recess for ten minutes and meet in the closed link at five forty.